It is super glad that United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A special meeting of the Board of Supervisors is scheduled for Tuesday, January 30th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant, 35468 Teetime Circle. Next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, February 9th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant at 35468 Teetime Circle. Please silence or turn off your cellphones. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Sub move. Second.
Any comment?
Yes. I was going through the resolution actually again this morning since I was off real early and I had nothing else to do except look through the paperwork here. In any case, I do have a question on it, and I think it's important that we get rid of surplus material, and you know, whether it be for scrap or something else, but I do have a question on the, I guess we're calling it, not the Quincy huts, but the two huts that we had for stor- no, not for, actually for storage, but for temporary, for the, um, temporary while we were building the maintenance facility. I don't know what we're going to get for those, but I do recall that when we were voting on this and looking at temporary storage facilities, there was a lot of discussion because these units were somewhere, we had a range of prices, anywhere from $100,000 to $35,000, which was pretty significant, and we talked about the pros and cons about leasing it versus buying it. And it was at that time, and agreed upon, that we were in negotiations with the people who were providing us these sheds or these units, that we would get 50% back at the end of the term, which would be roughly, you know, if there were 35,000, it's going to be a little over 17,000. I suspected if this goes to auction, we're lucky if we get $10,000 for both of them. I might be wrong on that, but I think it's, we were told we were going to get 17 and a half back, and where did that go? What happened?
We're actually not taking the sheds to auction. What we're doing is we are going to leave them there, where they stand today, and advertise for sealed bids from the public. So, we, I think the half for the 17,000 or so was estimated by the vendor at the time that we could get back within a year. So, we hope to get that, but we don't know what sealed bids are going to be.
And also, Tanya can interrupt.
Sure.
We also decided to keep the ones down at the sewer plant because it protects the equipment we have down there. So, we're only going to auction off two of them instead of the, actually four of them. So, we're only auctioning off two.
Two out of the four.
Two out of the four. And that's where the $17,000 came in. If we were sent everything back, we thought we would get that back, but for the cost to put them in, to install them, to put the electrical and stuff, it's really a no-brainer to keep what we have down at the sewer plant because it's going to protect a lot of our equipment down there, which in the past, we had nothing to protect it, that they weren't undercover or anything. So, that's why we decided to go that way.
Okay.
So, we're only going to auction off two, Mark.
Okay, the two we're auctioning off, what was the cost of those then? Was that $70,000, $35,000 a piece?
No, no, no.
Or 35 for the both of them?
No, no. To buy them, to buy them, they were around $9,000 a piece.
Okay.
Each one. Now, you've got to remember, the $35,000 you're talking about was also, which included insulation, which also included adding electrical and bringing water to them. I mean, that wasn't, you know, the cost per unit, so I think you're getting a little confused there.
Well, I'm just, I might be confused. You're absolutely correct, but the minutes stated that it was 35,000 and we're getting 17 and a half back. It didn't state that it had to do with anything.
Well, not giving everything, you know.
Okay. But I was under the assumption we were getting 17 and a half back.
Good question.
And Mark, this weekend, meeting I had with Tanya, I think Mike and Tanya are hoping to get back more than what we thought.
Mm-hmm.
This way.
We are.
The way we're doing it instead of the, what they told us, but that's what they told me.
And that's fine. I totally agree. I'm just saying that, you know, the expectation was 17 and a half.
For all four, Mike's right. It was all four sheds, but two of them are only going to go to sealed bid.
We discussed a minimum bid. Are we doing that? We want to start it at $3,000 a unit, started there. We've had, we've had four people interested so far. Nobody's given me any price of what they want. Well, one person did said that, you know, what he was going to bid per unit. So, I mean, I don't know what anybody else could bid because it's going to be sealed bid, so.
Okay.
But we also have another golf course interested in also, so, you know.
There's no place, other areas that we could utilize those maybe?
Uh, there is, but, well, I mean, there's always a place you can use, you know, use, something like that, but I really don't think, I think with the facility that we have, I think for the next 20 years, we're in good shape.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any public comment?
I don't, I don't have the list of the, the list of the equipment on there, but in order to clean up the resolution, if those are the ones that we're going to, we're going to sell, that don't go to auction, does that, we have to amend the resolution to clean that up? I don't know what's on the, I looked at the list, but I don't know what's on it. Just a thought.
It listed as Exhibit A, so I don't know, you know, David would have to answer that.
Oh, no, I mean, we're good. It says the standard surplus, so whatever's on the, on the list is what's going to surplus. So, I'm assuming the two things that we're talking about sending to public auction are not on the surplus list.
Yeah, right. They are on the surplus.
They're on the surplus.
That's the question, man. They are on the surplus list, so.
The resolution is just to deem the equipment surplus. Okay, so that's what we have to do first, whether we send it to auction or whether we do a sealed bid process for that. So, this, that's what the resolution is today.
So, then, no. It's just deeming the property, surplus property to be disposed of as, no.
Any other public comment?
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
I'm going to need a motion to recess to conduct the landowners' meeting. Sub move. Second.
Second.
I would ask the supervisors if they would to go out and set an audience. I make a motion to nominate Wally Edgell, Chairman of the Landowners' Meeting. Would you like to have a second? Is there any additional nominees? Do we have just a voice vote? Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Edgell?
Okay, I guess everybody got a, the agenda for this meeting. We're on, back over here, did everyone get one? Things we need to cover and so forth, but I think the first thing we do, need to do is to nomination of a secretary. And usually, in the meetings that I've seen in the past, the administrative assistant from the district office, Chrissy Hardman, has had that duty. So, do we need a nomination for that? Nomination from the floor?
Sub move. All eyes? Okay.
All eyes. You're the secretary. She does all the minutes and so forth like that, so she'll be getting those out, which I'll mention later on. And now, Dan, if you would come forward for your soaring, if you'd go to the administration table, and they will swear you in there.
Mr. William Stiegel was the only person that qualified for the landowner seat in this position. His seat was uncontested, and so, since his, since he has already taken oath in this position, you know, I would like to introduce Mr. Stiegel as the new landowner seat, and at this time, there's no real need to do another oath since you've already done the oath in the current position that you're in. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll show you, but there was a copy of the minutes from the January 27 meeting, 2017, that was back there, and we need to approve those minutes. Do I have a motion of that effect?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Second, David seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good on that. Now, we have the annual report, which is also published, and on the counter back there from the district manager, Tanya, so Tanya, can you take over now?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning to everyone today. I've provided to you a copy of the districts in my, my report for the 2017 year, and, you know, this report summarizes the projects that we've completed, you know, statistics on where we are in our recreation and, and public works, code enforcement and security. Sunland Lake was created in 1974 by Highlands County, when the ordinance, otherwise known as what we call our charter, was approved by the Board of County Commissioners. We're classified as an independent special district, which is a governmental entity recognized by the state of Florida. And I'm sharing this with you today because our district charter has amended, been amended from time to time throughout the years as changes occur. Like I said before, this report summarizes the district's major operational accomplishments for 2017. This has been a very challenging year for our district operations, due to Hurricane Irma, which made landfall on Sunday, September 10th. The eye wall of the storm went directly over Sunland Lake with heavy rainfall in category wind, wind speeds, or category three wind speeds. Our facilities generated, and were generated on, excuse me, operated on generated power until the electricity was restored. It's a very critical time to keep our facilities up and running, and we maintain uninterrupted water service for 3,700 residents and commercial businesses here in the district until electricity was restored. I'm going to show you a couple pictures of the damage from the golf courses here in a few minutes. Actually, this is one of them, but I'll get to that, that's okay. I'll get to that in a few minutes. The district's overall financial stability and health is a very strong position for community and our, and the growth for the future. We have funded our new $1.8 million maintenance facility through our utility reserve account, known as our Utility Renewal Replacement Improvement Fund. The district finished its fiscal year, September 30th, with a $13 million budget and no debt. Over $400,000 of additional repair costs were incurred from Hurricane Irma for this community. We are hoping that a high percentage of these costs will be reimbursed by FEMA sometime this calendar year. Assessments in utility rates remain the same as last year, and the golf rates increased 3% from 2016. I want to thank, thank all my staff for a great year, a very challenging year, and I will move on to a few projects that we have finished in 2017. The first one is our Unit 23 wastewater treatment plant blower project. And the pictures are inside the documents I've provided to you today. The Unit 2 Palazzo rear lot drainage project, the district office roof replacement, the Metansus lift station rehabilitation, and the Edgewater Drive lift station rehabilitation. We completed Phase 1 of our drainage remediation project, and main ditch cleaning projects, and last but not least, of course, our maintenance facility that I mentioned to you before. There's a, there's some pictures in here of thefores and afters, and I'll move on to a couple of pictures for everyone. This is a picture of Deer Run after the hurricane, and you can see the fairway, what it looked like, and closed for some time. I'm going to move on. There's an aerial shot of our community center. We'll get to our, a couple more hurricane damage pictures here in a second. Just an aerial shot of our tennis courts and pickleball courts. This is a picture of the pond between the driving range and the putting green, practice putting greens. You can see that the water levels were so excessive, they went all the way into the district office area where we park our trucks and equipment, literally by, what, two feet? Into that area.
At least two feet.
So, tells you, we, we, I haven't seen the actual official rainfall amounts, but we believe that we received about 14 inches of rain. This is another picture on Deer Run. Just a couple other things I wanted to mention with our memberships here in the community. We have, we have about 310 golf memberships currently. We have 530 memberships for our Fitness Corner, 790 memberships for our pool, and 510 for the racket club. And last, I'd like to mention a couple things with our code enforcement. The Sunland Lake code enforcement, we, we took 15 cases to the special magistrate this year that resulted in $17,000 of liens being assessed to properties, and we collected just over 16,000 in those liens in the current year. With security, our security department totaled 80,870 miles of travel within the district boundaries, and we, we had over 437 incidents where we were called, and 8,500 watch orders performed for residents that were out of town or were north for the summertime. Thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone being here today.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a second, all of us know all about the hurricane, the damage it did and so forth like that, but I'd just like to take a second to, to mention and thank the board for what they did, because the five members of that board were out there working, just not making decisions. They were out there working, along with Tanya and her staff, and Mike Hurley and Omar DeJesus, who are all, all involved in this, and these people really, really deserve a round of applause. The next thing on the agenda is any unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? I have a couple of letters, but I'm going to do that in the next section. All right, let's get unfinished business going into new business. One of the things that I have in new business is a letter that was sent to the board that I'd like to read, because you seldom get letters like this, that these people deserve this, but it's from the Sunland Lake Veterans Relief Fund, and that's the people that really control the interest and the monies for the veterans in our county. And the letter is from Denise Williams, U.S. Army, and she's the county veteran service officer for Highlands County. And she states, "Gentlemen, the veterans of Highland County and the Highlands County Veteran Services Office want to commence, commend each of you on how you exemplify the meaning of going above and beyond. Had it not been for your organization, there would have been many veterans without Thanksgiving and Christmas dinners. You continue to surpass many other organizations in your relief effort for the veterans in need. As the veterans were receiving their Christmas dinners, Mr. McCullough," that's Kirk McCullough, one of our residents, "handed out Walmart gift cards. We had the privilege of the veterans returning the very next day and saying, 'I have been a veteran for 50 years, and this is the first time I have ever received anything for being a veteran. Let me say it was moving and humbling moment.'" I cannot thank each of you enough for always being there for this office when the veterans are in need. Respectfully to Denise Williams. And she specifically mentions Kirk McCullough, Mike Hurley, Gene O'Hara, and Howard Empress. And they do, they have that golf course and raised all that money, and Kirk McCullough, I don't know how many trips he's made to the veterans hospitals and hauling people over in the van and handing out money. Kirk McCullough has been in this, it's a full-time job for him. It's a full-time job. And so, I think the next time you see Kirk, he isn't here, is he? The next time you see Kirk, pat him on the back, because he really deserves it. He does a lot for that. I'll put that, you've had to Chris, you for the minutes. Also received a letter from Agnes and Brian Snowball about the dog park and so forth, questions about that, since that is something that was passed, and I'm going to forward this letter to you, that if you're put it in, and put it for the next board meeting, for them to consider their concerns on that. Any other new business? Yes, sir. Can you come, if you do have, could you come to the podium and mention your name, so we can keep that on the record?
Yeah, Bob. Bob Shaw.
Okay.
Nida Street. It's a year ago now since Mike and his team met with myself and two other landowners about the ditch behind Metansus and Nida Street. Since that time, it's never been cleared or weeded or anything. It's well overgrown, there's hurricane debris in there. I know nothing's been done because of the hurricane situation and the potential for putting in the drainage pipe. I just wondered if there was a schedule as to when this job was going to be done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Do you want to explain about what we, about the bids and stuff yesterday?
Yes. We received five bids yesterday for this project. There's no set schedule yet, so we're going to be reviewing those bids and bringing the bids to the board sometime in February for approval. So, as soon as we have a, award a bid and we receive a schedule from the contractor, we're going to let the residents know.
Okay. Mr. Shaw, I'd like to address that also, since you, thank you for coming in. I was on the board at one time, and these drainage ditches have been a problem all the time I was on the board, and when we would send out for bids for these, you might get one bid, sometimes two, and you've got five bids this time. So, we have people interested in doing this work now. It used to be just, maybe not so, but thank you for coming. Any other new business? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jim Van Horn from off Metansus. This is another planned drainage issue that we talked about earlier. The front ditches and culverts, are they scheduled to do that this winter sometime, or when is that going to happen?
Um, we will, uh, what street are you on? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Pardon?
What street?
Metansus.
Metansus, yes. We're going to do a lot of handwork, but, but we also have, have contractors that bid on the areas that we've talked about, right now, too. As soon as, as soon as we finish the bids, well, if the bids are done, you'll be getting letters and we'll be sending the letters out to let you know when we'll be starting, the starting date.
So, we can expect that sometime?
This year.
This year, great.
Yes, right.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
My name is Paul McAllister, and I have property at the back of Number 12, on Deer, Number 12, the pond. I'm just wondering if there's an update on it. I had mentioned earlier about, it's a disgrace, there's dead fish in there, there's all kinds of debris from, there's all kinds of debris from.
I thought you could hear me.
Anyway, okay. There's all kinds of debris in the back of the pond, there's dead fish, I've taken out aluminum siding from houses, big branches, et cetera. The rest of the golf courses here are terrific, the ponds, et cetera. I'm just wondering if there's an update on the cleaning of the pond. Yesterday, there was not. I brought it to somebody's attention on Monday, and it still hasn't been done, so I'm just wondering if that could be located.
Jim, Mike?
I think, I think we mentioned that Jill and.
Right, I didn't know, while, while we, on, on that hole, we know we have to clean it up. You know, we've been so backed up with so much work, we know it has to be done. I don't know, we have it on schedule. I'm not going to tell you exactly what we're going to do it, but yes, we have it scheduled to go in and clean it up. Now, the dead fish, I don't know what's, you know, you know.
I don't know whether the fish get in there firstly.
Yeah.
They're not very big, but.
And I don't know how they got there either, so.
You wouldn't want to take them.
Yeah, right, right.
But I appreciate that I haven't tried to clean all the stuff up myself.
We have cleaned some ponds already, but we're working our way around.
I agree, if you're dead, you find out where you are.
You know, any aluminum siding, I'm sure came from the storm.
It did. We didn't do a DNA on it yet, so.
No, not yet. Well, maybe, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? All right, Mr. Shaw. I'd just like to confirm that is the program still in place for new homeowners, first-time homeowners in the district to get a golf membership for one year?
Yes, still active for 2018, yes, sir.
And there's, didn't I read, there's a meeting sort of in hell or coming for the new members, new residents and board members?
February 6th.
February 6th.
Here at the Island View Restaurant at 6 o'clock. We have a new resident meeting where we can meet staff, and they can meet the Board of Supervisors.
Because that's a very, very important meeting, and I've been to two, I'm in Board of Supervisors, and it works out wonderful for new people in the community. Any other new business?
Is there any early indication of any positive or negative impact on doing away with the Latino America tournament, or is that too early to speculate?
If, I'll start with this. I think that it was voted by the board not to have the Latino tournament and not to have the Canadian tournament, and they went back and forth different ways, but is that where we're at on that?
We are not having those tournaments in 2018, but your question is the impact of not having those tournaments?
Negative or positive?
Jim, would you want to speak to that?
Well, the impact, negative or positive, I guess, are you saying financial? Obviously, there's a, the, the reason the decision made, was made not to host those events were a number of reasons, the damage they did to the golf course, the displacement of the golfers and so forth. I know we haven't closed out January, so we don't have a full picture, and then it's not necessarily accurate because the, the weather this year relative to outside play is not at all what it was to last year, but we will have a, you know, end of the month, January, that'll show month to month, but it's going to be the entire, you know, month.
Thank you, Mark. Any other new business? Yes, sir.
Ray Hagley, 3717 Edgewater. Was there any other consideration of locations for the dog park? I mean, I'm a snowbird, but, you know, we came in here kind of, I don't know too much about this. Can they get a little discussion about this dog park?
Yeah, there was enormous discussion about that, and it was in every board meeting minutes, because we. minutes because we discussed it every meeting. And the newsletter that goes out to all residents, whether the snowbirds or not, there's always, there's things in there about it. But there was a lot of discussion going on about this because it was initiated because we had a petition with over 100 signatures on the petition. And I kind of took that as a lead to have that dog park. We did consider, I don't know how many places we considered, and every one of them fell apart because of some reason. And we ended up with that decision to have it over here because of its access and stuff like that. We've, I was with Mike and others when we see if there's going to be any visual effect on you all looking out. I know one thing most of you bought of before, you can see on the lake. Well, this is 74 feet, or five feet high, and it's fencing, so there won't be any problem for you there. There's a lot of questions. I understand that, and we're going to cover this right here, just the public commentary, and I'll have people discuss that with everybody, so you know the facts of what's really going on and what this is about and stuff like that. I had a feeling that it was, it was going to come up, so, and I, we will discuss that.
Just, I think, I just need to, we need to know a little bit more about it, about parking and...
Sure, sure. And I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I thank you for bringing up the point, and we are going to discuss it, and get your opinions on it, stuff like that. I do want to say, anything else?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, all right. We can get into that in the public commentary if you want to. Is there any other new business?
Lon Rickard, I live on Granada Boulevard, 5605. I was wondering if we could go back to looking at putting on a speed table on Granada between this street here and the stop sign. They've got one there and they stop there, and then it's a drag strip down to the next stop sign, so...
Yeah. I am glad you brought that up because that is, that needs to be discussed, just not there. There's others also. And Mike could do a better job at this than I can. I know what the biggest catch-up is, is get the residents, right?
Right.
Have to approve it. And that seems to be a problem sometimes with that, so...
I just don't understand why 100% of the residents have to approve that, because it's not the residents, it's their speed.
They don't, they don't. It's not, it's not 100%. I think it's 65 or 70, which I don't think you're going to have a problem getting signatures anyways because we do have a lot of complaints. But we have to get the signatures, you know, in order to, you know, to...
So you're telling me I have to go to every, every house on Granada?
Well, I had to do the same thing on Columbus. I had to go, I mean, and I know there's a little less, but that's the way to get it in.
Okay.
You know?
Okay, thank you.
You know, and I agree with Lottie, they do go, you know, it's from one speed to, you know, and see how fast they can go, so...
Yeah, well...
That's a good point.
It is, and those speed bumps, I can sit in my back room, and there's a speed bump right there on Columbus, and I see cars going through, and they don't bother, don't even worry about that. And you can see the sparks fly. Especially if there's one guy, you can tell Bob, there's one guy out there with a little black sedan with the windows open, and that kid runs that block like it is Speedway. And I can't, I can't catch him. Okay, any other new business? You want to move on to public comment now? Any, any public comment? It was, I had mentioned to Ray that, yes, sir, you want to come up?
I was wondering if anyone has, I can talk down though. I was wondering if anyone on the board is giving any consideration to the liability factor, if you have a dog park there and somebody gets attacked or bitten.
Okay. And your name, sir?
My name is Jim Jones, I live on Edgewater Drive.
I'll address that. There has, we've run, the liability issue has been run through the attorney and so forth like that. But I have to mention something to you that, only in courtesy to the board, that this, this was approved by the board, financed and so forth by the board, but for us to discuss this in here, the board members cannot discuss this while they're sitting here. So there's no use to ask the board member or anybody to have anything to say. It needs, they can only discuss this, according to the sunshine law, any issue that's going to be brought up, that could possibly come up for a vote, they cannot discuss amongst themselves, only in a public forum. So this was passed by the board. I know that Mike Hurley and myself and others worked on it, trying to get it put together and so forth. I'm going to present to the board at the minutes of this meeting and your concerns with that, and then when the board is brought together on their next meeting, they can discuss it then, if they want to discuss it, it'll be up to them. But for us now, it'd just be the concern to get your concerns, okay? Could you come up here, ma'am?
What about parking?
Okay, it's been discussed about parking. I'll let, I'll let Mike, because that is a nice issue, I agree. And your name?
Lola Dixon, I live on Edgewater Drive.
Lola?
Lola, yes.
Yeah, that, that is a great question, thank you.
We are not adding any parking, Edgewater, because there's all no parking on that, on the opposite side of your condos. We are not adding anything. The only thing that, well, uh, let me give you a little history, okay? For the past seven years, I've got more complaints about people walking dogs in that area that don't pick up after their dogs. And the majority of the complaints is from people from the condos, right? So we tried to figure out, okay, how can we, how can we police people walking their dogs? You can't beat there all the time. So, so there was a lot of discussion about a dog park, you know, to fence them in, to allow people to walk their dogs in the dog park, right? So that's how, that's how this all started. And all started with complaints of people, because people walk their dogs now every day, right? 9 o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night, in the mornings, you know, you know, they're always there. So, so, so we had three different areas that we looked at, Wally and I. Like, that was, that was the most convenient for all the residents. We do this for all the residents of Sun and Lake. So, so that was the area, the, the area we come up in. We're not taking a lot of trees out. We're taking a few because, because there are some dead pines anyways. We're going to take the least amount of trees. It's going to be a five-foot-high fence. It, it's going to blend in with the area. There's going to be no view change for anybody, right? There's going to be no parking added.
Lola, I had to talk to you about parking.
Yes.
We, when that was being discussed over, you know where those storage buildings are at?
Yes.
In the turn?
Yes.
That's going to be the parking area, which will be designated parking for people where they take their dogs up there. Then there's going to be more, no parking signs being put on across the street from you. And we've also discussed about security, because more often than not, they're going to be over there, and we want you all to complain someone's parking lot parking spot, and we're going to issue tickets. And if they...
Then there's another question. That area in there was a home for the owls. They would come and nest.
Yeah.
Now, they're not going to come there with all those dogs yapping and carrying on.
Well, they come now, and there's a lot of, a lot of people walk dogs, as a matter of fact, there's people in this audience right now, one lady, I see her every day, she walks her dog, she has three or four dogs. And those owls, those owls, right, but those owls have been there for years. Now, we've actually had the owls fall out of the nest, and I had myself and somebody from security actually climb the tree and put the owls back in.
I know.
And they're back again every year, you know?
I know, I remember that, but, well, I'm, I'm just concerned because people park, I mean, when there's fireworks, they park all over the place. Are we still to, to watch all that?
Well, what we're going to need, we're going to need help from your, from the residents that live there, okay? If somebody's parking in your spot, which, if they park there now, you call, right? And, you know, we understand we're going to have to police it probably a little better, you know, once we put this in. I really don't think there's going to be that much of a change, you know, for people bringing dogs in from the outside. And that's what I keep hearing. Well, you're going to allow people from the outside side in. I don't think there's going to be that much. And then if there is, then I guess we could probably change the rules down the road. But there is a, there's a big request for a dog park. And there's always been, I mean, I've been doing this for seven years, and every year people say, well, when are you going to put a dog park in? At least they're contained. So, and now, I just had them all, our...
That letter that you stated, we didn't receive that letter, so that's, that's why...
Well, this has been going on for, a year and a half?
It started in May of 2000.
April or May of 2017.
Do you get a, do you get the newsletter from Sun and Lake?
We didn't send a letter. We did not send a letter to the residents of Edgewater.
Yes.
No, ma'am. We did not send a letter.
So we didn't know anything about it, just across the street from us? Okay. So my other question, there was another question that was probably going to... Oh, is my understanding in the, the open 24 hours?
Well, we're not going to lock it, no. But, but, but I want to say something.
Yes.
I don't think there's going to be that many people walking their dogs at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning and letting them run. I mean, I hope there weren't anyways, I mean...
Dawn to dusk.
Dawn to dusk, right.
Yes, just like our other facilities, dawn to dusk. I mean, that's the rules for the rest of our facilities.
Right.
There's going to be additional parking at the community center. So you're welcome to park at the community center, there's a handicap, there's handicap parking there as well, and to walk to the dog park.
David?
I'm as guilty as anybody for not bringing this up before, but just, this letter, when I saw this letter, it opened up some things and I questioned it, and I had the same opportunity as anybody else to question some of that. And I'm like this lady, I don't have any problem with a dog park, but you've got to have some empathy for them because it's, it's going to, it's going to hurt their property values and it's going to, it's going to hurt their quality of life, I believe. But also, that, that property, and I've discussed it with a certain individual, that it's, it's R3-zoned for, and it was set aside for golf fellows at one time, and, and there's no problem with putting a, putting a fence up, but that's pretty valuable property to, to put a, put a dog park there, as far as I'm concerned. Because if somebody comes in and wants to develop that, it just have to be torn down and relocated, so...
But might I address that? Because that did come up in the meetings we had, and that was one thing, and those residents over there said, don't you ever let anybody build apartments on this side and block our view of that lake? We always kept the view of that lake in our mind all the time, because people over there would tell me, say, I bought here, I want to see that lake. If we build, someone who's in there developing, builds two stories over there, they're done.
Yeah, but he could.
The property value could go down.
The way it's zoned, they could. They keep saying that they couldn't, but they could.
Yeah, I know.
It's owned, it's owned Molly family.
Yeah.
So the, the, it's just pretty valuable property to put, to put that dog park on. And, and as far as, as far as outside, people coming from outside, there ought to be a big sign on that, and it should say, Sun and Lakes, Sun and Lake is funding this thing. It ought to be a big sign out there. Hey, number one, a disclaimer for liability. Number two, it should be for, only for the residents of Sun and Lake, and only should be in capital letters, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I don't know what anybody else thinks about it, but that's my thoughts.
I think you're going to get some agreement on that, because we, in our planning, there was signage put in, there will be plenty of signage over to explain to people, Sun and Lake paid for this, this should be for Sun and Lake people, and we're, we're hoping that people won't drive in from Sebring and bring your dog up here walking.
Yeah, well...
There is a dog, there is a dog park in Avon Park.
I'm, I'm sure you had had some more activity early on, if somebody would have put a, put a, posted a sign up there, say, future home of Sun and Lake Dog Park. I believe these people would have had, would have had an issue earlier, earlier than what they have now. I mean, they got blindsided just a little bit.
Yeah, I, I agree with you there. Thank you, David.
My name is Michelle Archer, and I live on Mansa Drive in Sebring. And for the little lady that's worried about owls, I'm the one with four dogs, and I know everything about owls. I can show you every nest around here with Mr. Halbig, and you don't have to worry about the owls. I want you to know that 56% of people own pets in the United States, 41% of pets are owned by 65 and older. And 89% of the cities in the United States have parks for pets. Pet, po, pet, uh, parks, okay? Right now, if we don't have a pet park in Sebring, we're going to be behind times, right here in Sun and Lakes. Pet parks, higher property values. They bring people to the area, they bring seniors to the area, because people 65 and older can't run after their pets anymore. They need a level ground to walk their pets, because they're getting too old to walk their pets on the, on their property, they're getting too old to walk them on the strip, they can't chase their dogs anymore. It's good for seniors, I don't know if you're reading in the newspaper now, but people that have pets live longer, it's healthier for them, it helps their hearts, it increases livability in the area, it discourages crime and loitering in the neighborhoods, pet parks. Dog parks are the number two amenity people search for when they're looking to live in a community. The number two amenity. You can look it up, the statistics are there, okay? So I think that we should start looking at the statistics to see if they are good or not. It's not going to lower the property rate there, and a fence is easy to take down if it doesn't look like it's a good place to put it there. But I think we should give it a chance and see before we knock down something that is good for the community. Sun and Lakes has to get with the program, and we've got to keep developing and getting better, not go backwards. Thank you.
Michelle, that was one of the things that we studied when we went to do this. We had the same stats that you have, and we found out from the real estate agents, and that's another thing I was issued on, was a marketing program. We found out from real estate agents, they're telling us that was one of the things that people ask, do you have a dog park?
That's right.
When they want to buy a house here. And that office knows it because they get asked all the time. We thought that might be a good marketing thing to get people here.
It is a good marketing.
And, but we had your stats, and we discussed them every time we do, so, well, this is the reason we're doing this.
And it is a good area, and it's nice and flat for the seniors.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. But I'll say, you go.
Margaret Jennings, I'm on Matanzas, um, at Edgewater also. A comment was made earlier today when I walked in about the dog dirt not being picked up by people using that area now. With the dog park, I don't see people changing their habits. Will the district be doing this, picking up the dog dirt in dog park?
No.
Okay. So it's just allowed to amass?
No, well, we maintain that area, we'll cut the grass, we'll go in and clean it, we pick up trash, we pick up trash on the streets, yes, we maintain it.
There's going to be some waste stations in there, Mike.
Have a full-time employee sit over there and watch the dogs, no.
No.
But yes, we are going to, no, 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 no. Right, exactly. And, and I agree with you, but we will maintain the area, yes, absolutely. Okay? And I really don't think, you know, I mean, and I agree with her 100%.
I agree totally with you on parks.
Yes.
But they're not usually in a high-population area.
Right, I understand. Well, Central Park has one. Okay.
But Margaret, might I add that, yeah, we talked about that, and we found out that a lot of these dog owners are telling us they're policing it.
Yeah.
They don't want their dog in there when Mary Lou brings her dog in and it poops all over the place. They're policing it themselves.
Okay.
And, and we, and part of the thing is, putting it in there, which she was about to say, is we have stations there, we're watering there and the whole deal, but they will be mowing it, trimming it, keep looking at it. But I agree that that could be a problem.
And there'll be no light, no light, everything at night. And I understand, you know, okay, all right. But I promise we'll do the best we can to police it, okay?
It's getting a little warm there.
Okay, I hear you. Thank you.
Jim Jonas, 6028 Matanzas Drive.
My comment about the dog park issue is the parking. Because I rent a space in the cart barn over there that you were referring to earlier, Wally. Where you're gonna direct the people to park in that area. Has any consideration been done about putting some signs up to tell these people, "Don't park to block the cart barn"? Because if I go over there to get my cart out one day and there's a dog's car there, I'm gonna be barking.
Yeah, there's, you're, you're, you're right. There used to be signs here that you park it off the side.
Yeah, I mean, I always make the habit of parking towards the street side, but you get people in there and there, and, you know, the dog's gotta go. I gotta park quick, get my dog to the park, and I can't get my cart out.
No, I agree with you on that.
Put some signs up.
Yeah, I'm gonna put some signs up.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
We don't want you barking, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm Judy Dornan, I live on Edgewater. I am not against a dog park. I'm against where you're putting it. I don't wanna see a bunch of signs over here. I don't wanna see a fence. I think this is the whole focal point of Sunning Lake. And I think that's why a lot of people have bought the park, the golf course in the back. Fencing is going to take away from it. And I just, I don't agree with it. I think there's many other places to put it.
Okay, thank you. That'll be in the minutes to go to the board. And what was your last name, Jim?
Green, Heisen Dorn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Shirley Schuman-Alegre. I don't have a dog. However, what I feel like is the learning point for all of us is that we really do need to keep up on the minutes. We need to keep up on the activities with Sunning Lake. In other words, we have a responsibility to. So I do feel bad for some of the people who weren't aware, but unfortunately, you know, there are things that slip up on us. And I just think we need to be more prudent in being able to try and get information about what's going on. And I'm really happy to see so many people here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Chrissy, you have all those comments for me? Okay, the only other thing is, now, since that is over, is to adjourn, but before we do, I wanna add one thing. Today, the board is gonna re- re-adjourn, and they're gonna elect a new president. And I'd just like everybody to know that Mike Gilpin has been president for a year, works every day for this place. And he's certainly stepping down now to be a regular board member, and I think we ought to give him a standing ovation. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Wally. Thank you.
While we're coming up here, I'd like to thank Dr. Edjo for reining over that special meeting. And I wanna thank everybody. I like the crowd here. I wish we could have more of a crowd every meeting we have. I need a motion to reopen, reopen the regular meeting, or reconvene the regular meeting.
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Need a motion to accept the action agenda. Second. Okay, next on the agenda is the election of officers to the board. The first board member will be the president. Can I have a motion? No, wait, Mark Camp.
Second.
Any comment? Any other motions? Public comment? Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Congratulations. Mark, you can come over here and sit down.
I'll just switch, I'll just switch. Yeah, thanks.
That's the only way I could get rid of him.
So I guess the next item on the action agenda would be the election of the vice president. Do we have a nomination for the vice president?
I'll nominate Joe Branson.
Second.
Chrissy?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes. Next on the action item is treasurer. Do I have a nomination for treasurer?
Omar DeJesus?
I'll nominate Omar DeJesus.
My second.
Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes. Final on the election is for secretary. Do I have a nomination for secretary?
Nominate Chrissy Hardman.
Second.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes. Next on the action agenda is a discussion item of Billy Casper Golf reimbursement request. Tanya, could you just bring us up to speed on that and maybe read that letter?
Yes. On December 8th, I sent a letter to Billy Casper Management for a request of reimbursement of $15,000 related to the greens damage on our golf courses. I received a response from Tony Chancy on January 18th that says, "While we do agree that we could have better managed our greens, we would agree to the $15,000 reimbursement with an opportunity to recoup this money if the club performs better than expected for the fiscal year." And I provided that email to you in here along with some other information relating to the greens replacement cost.
Board discussion?
You want me to start?
Somebody start.
First of all, I did, I just make this, I guess as simple as I can make it is, I think they ought to pay the $1,500, or $15,000, and we should let them do it on a 10-month basis like they want. But I must say, and I think you all know, at least those that come to meeting, I'm not real happy about settling this thing at $15,000, but I guess that's what, that's what we're gonna do. Our total cost is $63,000. No fault of Sunning Lake, and we're gonna settle for 15, and they come back and they wanna earn that 15 back, which is our money. So what we'd be doing is paying them back $15,000 and them not paying nothing. I just think it's something we should talk more about up here at the board, because we can't talk unless we bring it up at the board meetings, and so we can be more in line. But I'm, I don't know when everybody gets done, but I'd like to settle for the 15, which I'm not happy for, but, and I don't want them to be able to return or get anything back other than pay their share. And that's, is that 20, that's just under 25%, isn't it, Tanya, $15,000 of the actual damage that was done?
Damage was 63, you said it correctly, yes.
You know, I could go on and on and on, but that's, that in a nutshell.
The word that comes to my mind is unfortunate. I think it's unfortunate that Florida summers are hot and humid. It's unfortunate the greens get fungus because of being hot and humid. It's unfortunate that our greens on Deer Run got fungus and it wasn't treated properly or in a timely manner. So we wound up costing us $63,000 for the two of them. It's also unfortunate that we have an antiquated irrigation system. It's unfortunate that it didn't properly water three of the greens on Turtle Run. It's further unfortunate that Billy Casper Golf employees did not follow their own guidelines and check each green every day. The other piece of this thing that's unfortunate is that we're not out of the woods yet, as far as I'm concerned. You start putting sod, Bermuda sod, on greens as late as we did, and you get a cold winter, we could have more damage. But the real unfortunate part to me is that, okay, I'm a banker, I'm an ex-banker. When I, when I made, when I looked the guy in the eye and I decided whether or not to loan him $1 million or $10 million or whatever that number was, I already knew what the numbers were. I could, I could look at it and say, "Well, yeah, he can pay me back." But the question in my mind was always, Willie? I have to, I have to, I had to feel like I had somebody across the desk that I could trust. He should also have had the same feeling that if he got into trouble, I wasn't gonna do, I wasn't gonna call the lawyer first thing and say, "Okay, move out of your house," or whatever the deal is. I mean, you gotta be able to have a relationship with someone who, if it's gonna be as it should be, you have to have a relationship that both sides contribute to. Honestly, Billy Casper Golf and Tony Chancy should have walked in here and said, "Hey, we need to, we need to figure out how to make this right." They didn't. It's unfortunate that we had to send them a letter. And we, in essence, limited our potential recovery by sending a letter with a number in it, although I don't think we could have done anything else other than just call them saying, "Hey, we want our money." The whole thing is unfortunate in that it's damaged, at least in my mind, the relationship between Sunning Lake and Billy Casper Golf for basically a de minimis amount. I mean, we're paying these guys $120,000 a year, but we're trusting them to take care of basically most of the assets that we own. And I just think it's terribly unfortunate from both sides. That would be, without getting any further, that's the, and let me also, before I stop, let me just say, I'm not talking about Jim Kurtzborn. I'd hand Jim Kurtzborn my wallet right now. That's not an issue. It's a corporate situation.
You want me to go? Okay. I guess my biggest disappointment is that they haven't admitted that they did wrong, that they screwed it up. I still haven't seen an apology come from Billy Casper. I think the offer that they gave us here is a complete joke. It's an embarrassment to us that they insulted us like this, saying, "Well, we'll give you the $15,000, but you have to give us an opportunity to get that money back." To me, that's just an insult. I don't, they, you know, if they would have apologized and said, "We screwed it up," I'd have a whole different outlook on this. But because they did not, I just have no regard for Billy Casper at this point in time. What I would like to know if we could do would be to alter the contract. David, you have to help me on this. Can we alter the contract and perhaps put in a clause saying, I don't know, if something happens like this again, that they would be responsible?
We can request a contract amendment, but like I say, all amendments have to be agreed to by both sides, you know, so.
I mean, what I'd like to say, the $15,000 for us, you know, it's not gonna put, it's not gonna make our day and it's not gonna break our day. But if something like this happens again and the cost is $70,000, and we have it in the contract that they would be responsible for it, they'd have to pay the whole thing. And that's something I'd like to try to do if we could.
Yeah, we could. I could put together a proposed amendment to the contract, and, you know, we'll get it worded the way you guys want it. Then we propose it, maybe, you know, it's up to them to say yes or no.
The bigger question is, what if it's not $70,000 next time? What if it's $700? Well, I mean, if you screwed up 36 greens, it'd be a lot more than that. I mean, we're at risk. And apparently, we don't have a partner who's willing to share the risk.
I just wanna say, I, their offer is what I expected to hear from them. Totally agree with Mike. I don't think we should have any obligation to give them back that money for any reason. And I would strongly support a contract amendment if we can reach an agreement with them to create such a thing. Their lack of culpability from their perspective is not acceptable.
Most of the things that I was going to cover have already been covered by my colleagues. I am very disappointed. I'm disappointed in the fact that the cornerstone of our community is the golf operations. The community grows based on that. But we also have two other areas. We spend approximately a third of our total budget for the golf operations. And then the rest, that's 66% roughly, is covered for all of our district's drainage and so on. The fact that, I'm just repeating, but the fact that Casper didn't come forward at all and say they were responsible for this made me really concerned, because I don't know what's gonna happen in the future. The organization presented a, way prior to me being, the organization, when they won the bid, and of course, the history is it went from Kitson to Casper, which was one and the same unit, were certain provisions that they said they would be accountable for. It wasn't hard written, but it was part of their sales tool to say, "If you select us as your partner, these are the things we'll do." The fact that we had this loss was an unfortunate thing according to, you know, everybody knows. Well, here we are, once again, stuck with a problem of $63,000 that we had to pay out. We asked for $15,000, and they came back with a counter offer that said, "Well, give us a chance to recoup our $15,000." And, oh, by the way, we wanna do that before interest taxes, amortization, and everything else. So they wanna take all of the number, and they wanna work on the baseline. There's only one or two ways that that can happen. They're gonna cut back on the service. And when they cut back on the service, the community is going to suffer. I'm not totally opposed, and I'd have to talk to my colleagues here, and maybe we can discuss it. I'm not even sure that we shouldn't maybe be looking elsewhere, throw our feelers, to see what else is out there. What other person might manage this operation? Maybe some of them is more interested in us. I don't know. Maybe that's a drastic step. I don't know that it's, why it would be a problem. There's nothing wrong with checking and seeing what your options are out there. So I might, you know, I might be inclined to look in that direction. But once again, it's four other guys up here that quite frankly have to say they agree with that or they don't agree with it. You know, that's what it's about.
I don't disagree with that. I do think perhaps the timing isn't the best since we just agreed to have Delozer take a look at our whole operation. I'm not sure we wanna be changing horses in the middle of that particular stream, but that's, that's the only reason I wouldn't agree with taking a look at it right now. Frankly, I think the offer was insulting, and it pretty much tells us where we stand.
I would, I would just add that if we did try to change the contract and they were not agreeable to it, then I'd look someplace else.
Well, there's enough weasel words in that contract. They can pretty much get away with whatever they wanna do, and that's, you know, they got lawyers getting paid by the hour, and we got lawyers getting paid by the hour. hour and we got lawyers getting paid by the hour and neither one of... The issue is, you gotta be able to trust a guy sitting across the desk from you to do the right thing, no matter what the weasel words say. And that's where I think we're falling down right now.
And it, just so everybody knows, it truly isn't anything against any of our employees that we have. I mean, I have no qualms with anybody who works for us, but it's the Billy Casper itself and what they stand for and what they do. I'd be in favor of trying to change that contract and wait and see what it is, but I certainly would like to, and I already have, looked into other management companies, so they are out there. And I just got an email this morning from one of our residents. But they, you know, we can't just pick anyone. They have to have food and beverage stuff at that. But I think we should try to work through this, but I think it opened the eyes of a lot of us supervisors of what we're really, and who we're dealing with and, because it clearly is not anybody's fault at Sun and Lake that we lost those greens, other than maybe having Billy Casper Golf do it. So I'm up for, I would just like to make sure that we ask for the 15,000 dollars, for sure.
Do you want me to incorporate that into part of the contract amendment? Do you want me to make that all part of the same deal or do you wanna settle that separately and me come up with a proposed contract amendment?
I think separate, I mean, that would be my...
I would look at it separately. Any further discussion? No? Are you going to...
Public comment?
Excuse me, Mark. Are you going to then write a response to Mr. Ciansi?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary Lilly, 5101 Magnolia, President of the HOA of Magnolia. I am absolutely pleased with the, obviously, the presentation of the board and as a homeowner, I support them. Frankly put, I think we should take 120,000 and be just a 63 plummet. And frankly put, if Billy Casper isn't willing to step up, I encourage the board as a homeowner to make the moves, obviously, to get another firm to manage our business.
Charlie Shields, resident. Question, why was the number 15K brought up when you say that the damage was 63? I mean, how did we get to 15? Hell, I'd like to hire somebody, you know, that just doesn't pass the dumb test.
I...
Answer?
Tanya.
I got to 15.
Yeah.
Well, that's great.
Here's the situation, and correct me if I'm wrong, here's the situation. Because we're bound by Sunshine laws, we can't discuss this prior to sitting in on a meeting with Tanya as a general manager. So if Tanya calls us in and says to us, "What do you think would be a good number?" And I'm just giving you a hypothetical. And one person says 20,000, another person says 50,000, another person says 70,000. You have to kinda take those five supervisors and come to somewhat of a consensus. You don't, you're not gonna take the high, high person, but you're not necessarily gonna take the low. So you kinda balance it out. You also have to take, I believe, you have to take into consideration and say, "What's realistic?" If it's $63,000, they get $120,000 annually. You go back to them with $63,000, they're probably gonna say to you, "Well, we're gonna opt to get out of the contract and then we're in scramble mode." That's my perspective on it. Now, maybe Tanya can add something.
Okay. The five of you up there and right now can talk, right?
Correct.
So what did you agree to?
Well, that's, Charlie, that's why I said when I first talked, that we have to, we have to talk at these board meetings.
We're at a board meeting?
I mean, before. And what we did is, I brought it up and wanted to talk about it, but it was the consensus of the board to have Tanya do it. I kind of objected to that because I wanted in on it, but we can't, we can't do that. There was no way I could do that, so I asked Tanya to take an average of what we wanted.
So you're telling me...
So I, I mean, I...
...that's work for Tanya?
No, no, no. That's not, but we should have at that meeting in the public, instead of worrying about what's politically correct, we should've had, talked at the meeting and set a figure in front of everybody and then we could talk. But what happened is we turned it over to Tanya. I can't ask anybody. I mean, I can tell you, I asked for half the money. I asked for $33,000 is what I wanted from them. And that's why I was unhappy with 15, but, so that's why I just say in the future, we need, when it's discussion from board to board, whether it's popular or not, or whether somebody doesn't want us to talk about something, we have to do that. Because I can't go after this meeting and call Ray up or Mark up and say, "I don't like that. Let's do that." We can't do that. So we have, in my mind, I probably made a mistake by allowing it not to be brought up and talked about in front of everybody so we could talk this out. Instead, Tanya can only tell you how she come up with the 15,000 dollars.
And just to let everybody know, as far as the, it's really immaterial at this point because with the basis of the counter offer, the $15,000 offer, as Dean rejected, we're not bound to the $15,000 number anymore, so...
I'll let you read that.
Tony Ciansi said that they weren't in violation of any of their duties, but I think they violated Section 1 of the contract, just as an opinion, but I'm not an attorney. But Mark brought up the implication of what they said they were gonna do with their initial presentation a while ago. And I agree, there's a lot of things that they said they were gonna do or they're not doing today. But Tony Ciansi's getting a bargain. He pretty much admitted when he was here that the loss of moisture in those greens were pretty much the reason why those greens failed. So 15,000 is a good number for him, I would think. I wouldn't have thought he would even sent this back. I thought, I would've thought he would say, "Okay, I'll pay the 15,000 dollars." But to ask for 15,000 back for a slice out of our non-operating income from a padded budget is ridiculous, I think. I agree that, you know, they'll find that 15,000 one way or another. But you guys are spending, think about how much time you guys spend on golf-related issues at this board meeting. And I know it's a big slice of our budget, but most of these things, a lot of these things that are coming up are things that should be handled by the two general managers and not by the board of supervisors. A lot of these things shouldn't even come to this board. And if you're spending all this time and you're not happy with who you have, then you need to go out and shop it. And there's no violation of the contract by doing that. I think it might be a prudent thing to do, but I don't think this is, I think this is a good deal for Billy Casper. I don't think it's necessarily a good deal for, a deal, you know, that's what we asked for. I think if they're willing to pay that, that's fine. But amend in the contract to put 100% liability on the subjective things about this, that's not gonna happen. They'll never do that. I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd waste my time going through that motion, but you can do what you wanna try.
Virgil Elliott, resident. The business that I was in, whether I was issued a canteen, a vehicle, or my training officer signed for a training area, I was responsible and accountable for it. It'd come out of my pocket if I screwed it up. And that included when I signed for all the equipment in the company. One time, one unit was something over $300 million. One piece is missing, I pay for it. If it's tore up by negligent, I pay for it. And I think it's a shame that we pay Billy Casper $120,000 a year and they have absolutely no responsibility or accountability to what the operation is. That's just my piece. I think we should hold them a little bit more accountable.
Thanks.
The board has a big responsibility here. You're responsible to all of the district for the money. And I know you have the best interests at heart. I'm not questioning that. However, for us to sit here and have a settlement be for such a great amount less is pretty significant. And I'm not a golfer, so I'm not complaining about the fact that the golf courses were not accessible. My one question would be, does the $63,000 include the loss that we had of the property at that time? I feel it's a very difficult decision. I know the letter's been sent. I respect Tanya being able to get a number together from the conversations, but I hope that we're looking at the whole of the district and the fact that this isn't just a decision of letting the money go. This is a big decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I do, and I mentioned one other thing, is I think from the language of this response from Mr. Ciansi, I think it's pretty much stating, they're obviously stating that they're certain they don't have, they didn't perform negligently, which to me says that if you, you know, if we're gonna proceed down this road, then there's a potential for litigation. So I'm happy to review the contract and see what, you know, what the specific, you know, requirements are and we can determine whether or not, if it's our position that they failed to perform under the contract, then we can respond and say, "Look, you know, based on our review of the contract, you failed to perform X, Y, and Z as required and therefore you are responsible for the full amount." You know, we can take that position if that's what the board wants. As, but as, like I said before, as far as the $15,000 offer, this counter offer dissolves that. We are, and we don't have any responsibility to adhere to that $15,000 number anymore.
Okay. Could you do that research on the contract? And at the next meeting on the 9th, could you bring us back your findings? And we'll have another discussion to figure out where we wanna go from there.
I'm good with that.
Any additional board comment?
Yeah, I'd have to say this is the one dumbest thing I've ever seen a company do. And I'm talking about Billy Casper. I mean, we gave him a chance to walk away.
I agree, Mark. We talk about it next meeting and it's important to know what Dave gives us.
We spend so much time on golf in our meetings, it's absurd. It really is. But in any case, people wanna bring it to the board, so here we are. Okay, there's no further discussion? Any add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications.
I have no written petition or communication, but I believe there's a gentleman here that would like to speak.
Mr. Dizik, I believe, that has some comments.
Members of the board, James Dizik. I'm not a resident of Sun and Lake. I'm a second-time member of Sun and Lake Golf. In the interim, when I rejoined, I played many courses throughout central Florida and that experience led me back to Sun and Lake. I think this is a wonderful facility. I'm more than happy with the golf course, the camaraderie of all the members, and I've enjoyed myself. My wife's health had changed recently and we found ourselves looking for specialized care. Most of her doctors are on the coast and at one week, we had spent three trips with 12 hours of travel time. We decided at that point that we would like to move from the area. That being said, I would like to convert my full membership to the five-month membership with a reimbursement for the amount approximately $830. That would convert that to a five-month membership. I'll take any questions anybody has, but I think I've said what I needed to say.
Any board discussion?
Is those figures correct?
Yes, $830 is the difference between a five-month membership and a full annual membership.
We, you know, in the past, we've kinda struggled with policy within the district here as it pertains to the golf operations and with the efforts of several board members and the golf operations, we're actually at the stage where we're ready to present some, a policy manual, be a working document, a living document. Unfortunately, at this point in time, we don't have anything in place that would allow a downgrade. People can upgrade, but nobody can downgrade. It puts this board in a very difficult situation, I think, to make certain exceptions. But I will go, based on my colleagues and what their thought process is, whether it would be a $830 reimbursement, I guess, and not a credit. Correct, Jim?
Correct.
And I need to get your thoughts on it.
Do you need a motion?
No, I don't believe it's a motion. It's just a discussion.
I, I think we should get something intact soon, but I would have no problem with giving 800 and some dollars back for that because he showed a, you know, just a problem that we have. But it's very important for us to work out or you to bring something to us so these questions don't keep coming up and when they buy a membership, they know what it is. So, and I know we're in the process of doing that, right?
We are in the process, but I believe it's in place that this isn't allowed. You know, so in the time the club's been operating, we have not refunded, you know, a membership in the middle of it. We have a leave of absence policy and unfortunately, in Jim's case, that doesn't apply because he's not returning, you know, to the area. So it, I believe the procedure's in place. The real question, I guess, is just whether we, whether we think it's appropriate to allow downgrades in membership, you know, because it is obvious that people can take out a yearly membership and have life happens, you know, and where a three-month or a five-month membership would be, you know, more appropriate. And I don't think the board wants us coming to you every time life happens to somebody and they want to downgrade their membership. So I think really the question is, we either think that, you know, once a membership's taken out, that money's obligated to the club and the leave of absence policy can, you know, fall into place, or we allow downgrades. It's one of those two. But I do believe there's something in place to handle this. I think it's just, what is new is that the seasonal's only been around four years. So the club didn't, there wasn't an opportunity to downgrade from a full membership because all they had was full memberships. But since this has come out, we haven't had this question come up. And then right after Jim had the request, we had another member that had, I wouldn't say a similar request, but also had a request to go from a full membership to five months.
So if I hear you correctly, you're saying we have potentially multiple requests on the table?
Yes. Well, I mean, if we set the precedent that we're going to let, you know, someone downgrade, then yes, I'm certain there is another request to do that.
I believe she's here.
Oh, Carol.
My name's Carol Jones and I'm a resident and I have been a member of this club since 2005.
Can you just pick up the mic? Thank you.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah.
Carol Jones. We've been a member, Nick and I, since 2005. And as you know, my situation changed this past year. In October, I joined the club, a full member as a single, and I paid half of that October 1st and the other half is due end of January. I sold our house and I'm moving back to Michigan in March. So I'm asking the board to allow me to change my membership to a single five-month, which would expire the end of February, and I would pay the additional amount due, which is, you'd have to check it, but I think it's like $786 that I would... you'd have to check it, but I think it's like $786 that I would pay to become a single five-month. I don't know if he paid the full year right up front.
With Carol is she's paid half of her membership so far, so when she's talking about adding the money, it's paying the difference between the half she paid up front and what a five month would be.
Yeah.
So it's the same as Jim. It's just Jim's paid all his up front, so he's looking to get money back.
You know, she's looking for the delta between.
Correct.
Five-month and a, okay.
Listen, you can say, you know, just hold on, say something about this. First of all, I'm sorry about your wife. Secondly, the Board is here to look out for the best interest of all the people who live in this District. So somebody coming here and making an appeal to us, I think, is, there's nothing wrong with it. I support, I would support both of your claims. They're very unusual circumstances, and you know what? I think it's the right thing to do.
I agree with Jim. If we're going to do this, this needs to be a policy. I, you know, we're going to be right back where we were a year ago, where all these exceptions were made, and at the time, they were probably appropriate, but in retrospect, we had to undo a bunch of stuff. So if we want to do it, that's, I don't care one way or the other, but I think it needs to be a policy. We're going to do it for you. We're going to do it for anybody. And you got to be, then you're going to get into, okay, well, what qualifies? Is somebody getting sick and going to the coast a problem? Okay, is that all right? What about if they just get sick and they don't want to play golf anymore? And you know, you just got all sorts of permutations here, and you start opening Pandora's box, you're going to get into problems again.
Pete DeLongchamp, a resident, you know, I would agree with you, Dan, because if something isn't in policy, it's hard to refund money. I mean, I've been a member here, I think this is my 10th year. First year I joined, they had an assessment, an initiation fee, which is quite a lot more than you're asking to get back. I was told at the time, because we asked, we said, you know, "These initiation fees have been waived, put back on, waived, put back," what are you going to do with it? So we don't see that ever happening. The following year, it's gone. Now, I wasn't reimbursed my initiation fee. I just looked at it as, I had to make a decision that year to join Sun 'n' Lake Golf Course, which I did, and I lived with that decision. And I think that's what we do. Things happen, but it's really difficult to get into all these special circumstances and, unless it's already put forth in the, in your membership policy to begin with.
I think I paid $2,000 bucks, too, Pete.
Yeah. Three thousand.
Three, yeah, $3,000. Shows you how smart I was, yeah.
Joe?
I just am concerned with a precedent that can't be defined, if you will. I emphasize with Jim and his situation, and obviously with Carol and hers, but the question will be, for the next one, what qualifies, what doesn't? So, you know, I think the leave-of-absence policy creates a vehicle for a lot of situations. I'm just not comfortable with opening another can of worms we've got to deal with maybe multiple times a year.
But that, I mean, I don't want to get into an argument over this. I would just say, we're here for a reason. There's always going to be exceptions to a rule. That's why we're here, to make a decision based on the claims that the people are making. I don't see there being a problem. And I personally would not have a problem saying no if somebody came up here and I didn't agree with it. That's why we're here. Done.
I hate to keep coming up here every 15 minutes, but the last time Jim asked for it, we turned him down because we didn't think it was a good reason. I think it's a good reason this time, and he, he paid this whole year up front. He wouldn't have had to pay his second half until, until the end of January, and I don't think he'd be sitting here asking for a, for a month's reimbursement. But in his situation, I think, and in Carol's situation, she's paying, I think she's going to pay more because she's going to, she's only paid half a year, and she just wants to convert it to a, to a little something different. I think we've got a different situation, and you're always going to have this kind of stuff. But I'm like you, and I'm like Pete. I paid, I paid an initiation fee that I didn't get it back, but I think, I think he's got a valid argument here, and, and until it's written as a policy, I mean, you still, the book's still open on a policy. You can put it into policy, but now I think you guys have a, another tough decision to make as to whether or not you, you, his problem is, he paid the whole year. He wouldn't even own, owe the second half until the end of this month, so remember what it's worth.
Where do we go from here?
Does every one of these requests have to come to this Board if we do that?
I mean, Jim brought up some things. It's not going to solve the problem right now that we're faced with, but we definitely need to address this. We'll probably address it in policy, and we'll probably address it if you want to do downgrades, or if that's a suggestion of doing downgrades to memberships. That would come up in, in next year's, or this year's budget discussions in May or June. But we have to deal right now with what we have at hand. And can I, can I ask a question, Carol? Are you, is your intention to come back here? In other words, let me tell you where I'm coming from on this, because I hate to make exceptions to every single policy, but the, the policy for medical leave, for an example, allows to take a medical leave and then credit a membership the following year. In other words, you don't get a refund, but you would get credited that amount of money towards the following year's membership. If you don't want to answer this, it's okay, but is your intention to come back as a member here? And if so, would you be agreeable to, or if the Board approves it, would you be agreeable to say and just take that money, that $700, whatever it is, the $800, and say, "I'll apply it towards next year's three-months membership" or something? Or do you not know that?
Originally, well, I really, I really don't know.
Okay.
I've been looking, and there's just too many decisions.
Okay. You don't have to explain any more than that. I appreciate it. I totally appreciate it, and I understand the situation, so, okay. I just, I had to ask the question.
I just don't know.
Okay.
I would like to, oh, go ahead.
I have one question, if I may. I think I'm in the same area. Paul McCullough, so I've been a resident here for 24 years, and I had a situation last year where I threw out my back for two months. I was given, according to the policy, I believe it is, I don't know if it's set down by Sun 'n' Lakes, or if it's set down by Casper, but this was a one-time only. One-time only, I'm allowed, what do you call it, a, if you're, if you're injured or sick and you break a leg, or in my case, that's one-time only, you get a credit for next year. And now, from now on in, according to this policy, from what I understand, I haven't given a definite answer, I'm out now. So if I happen to pull my back out again or whatever, it's a one-time only that I've been told. Now, I'm not sure if it's, if I hurt my back or break a leg next year, I'm not looking for money back. I'm looking for, and I lost two months at $5.63 a day, and it cost me $4,800 for the membership, and I'm to give $365 back. That's fine with me. I was given credit, you got my money, and give me a little bit of off next year. But if it should happen to me next year, and all of a sudden, I get one ticket to cash, and I've already had it, and I don't get that again, I've paid over $100 grand since I've been here. I brought people here and everything else, and I think PR should be, this club should look at the people who are here, the ones that are giving, ensuring, whatever, and I think I've done my job. To be all of a sudden, one time, and I don't get it again, that could be the policy that I think should change, that that person should be considered. If you have a doctor's certificate, what more do you want? That's all I'm thinking. I think I'm trying to fit in with the rest of the people that they're saying now, that they're injured or hurt and they're leaving. I've said mine, so I'd like to know, is it a continuation, or do you get one ticket to cash?
I believe I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, I believe that the policy was a one-time, however, that can, you can come to the Board if there's a, a situation that arises such as you've just described. I believe, and I believe that's written.
That's correct.
I think it's actually written in the policy.
Yeah, that's in the new policy manual, that exceptions would be brought to the Board.
Right.
So if someone was here two years and was asking for their second medical leave, it, you know, it would be considered differently than if someone was here 24.
And more importantly, I, just as an individual here on this Board, would prefer that there's a policy there so we don't even have to deal with bringing it to the Board.
I think, I think that's what it would be. You guys got enough to do.
You know, I don't, for every exception of the rule, I just, I think it needs to be written and something that we have to work on.
I think you, Jim, and the Board knows that, you know, don't try to coni-coni. You guys have been around long enough to know what's going on. If somebody comes in there and he got a cast on his leg, he didn't wear it for Halloween, he got a broken leg, I can't play. So here's the doctor's certificate. Would I be considered for an extension of what I'm going to miss this year for next year?
And I, as I said, I think it's a discussion we need to have.
I don't know when that policy came out, but I checked it out last year, and it said it's only one time, so when did that come up? Just sort of curiosity.
The leave of absence or the exception policy?
I'm sorry?
Well, the leave of absence, to my knowledge, has been around for quite a while.
I think he's asking when the new policy's coming, when this policy's coming.
Because when it happened to me, Jim, without your respect, I was told that this is one time.
And it still is one time, but, but there's the ability, well, I'll read it exactly the way it's written, which should be approved in, at the next Board meeting, because I have some extra things that have come up. But the way the leave of absence policy is written is, so there, as you said, a member may choose to take a medical leave, a one-time leave of absence per membership, and then at the bottom of the policy, it says, "Exception to this policy must be approved by the Sun 'n' Lake Board of Supervisors."
Okay, I, I wasn't privy to that last part that you asked, but. It hasn't gone out yet. I guess if I, it hasn't come out yet, I'm not privy to it. Just to let you know, I wasn't told that, so I'm just trying to clarify. It's a question, you've responded, I got an answer, and I'm a happy camper.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I don't get injured.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
I just quickly want to say, I would be in favor of giving Jim and Carol their refund because it's, I have a problem sometimes when they, they play and get hurt or have to leave and half the membership's gone or, or something, but I like, it's the same way we talked about with Billy Casper. It's, I like that they're coming in and not wanting something by the month. They're saying, "I'll take, I'll pay my five months, and I have this exception." So I, I'd be in favor of giving Carol and Jim their money back.
So we just need a consensus? Is that the way?
Somebody make a motion? Because my understanding is that the, the requests have been denied, you know, by, by Jim based on the, the initial request, so basically what they're asking for is the Board to reverse that, and so my recommendation would be to somebody make a motion and.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
Take your vote.
Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
No.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
And I think that once, you know, once the, the policy revisions are done, plain and simple fact is, this is never going to go away. You know, this is, these are public meetings, and anybody that wants to can come up and make a, you know, they can submit a request. So this is just whether or not the Board is going to entertain them or not. They say, you know, "Policy is policy, you know, thank you for your, your request, but we have a policy that addresses this." And if there's, basically that's what the people are going to be asking, or may happen in the future, is, once the policy's set down, if they're not happy with the policy, they're going to be asking for an exception, and it'll be whether or not the Board wants to grant exceptions.
Thank you. Any more petitions and communications? No? Staff reports?
None. Oh, sorry. I believe Jim has a staff report, yes.
Just wanted to follow up on some things. I did meet with the GPS company, DSG Tag, at, at the merchandise show in Orlando. I feel confident, but it's definitely not a guarantee that their attention to us and to our units is, is going to be better. They've committed to bring in 40 of their new refurbished units, not used units, to, to take our fleet up to 100%. They've committed to train our people to reinstall, so give us a stock of units on, on site and have us be able to change out those units and get up to a 1% or 2% failure rate.
Haven't they committed to that before?
No, they haven't, and as I've talked to them, I did talk to the CEO instead of the Director of Sales, and they are, the show does end today, so I did tell them that I wanted to get what they were going to do in writing, because I want to work with David to, to tighten this up, since we're in our, we're in the service part of our agreement with them as opposed to the purchase. So the first year, there was a warranty on the actual product. Now we're into more of a service maintenance agreement on the product, and I just want to work with David to tie it up. They definitely have a lot of a way to go to get my confidence back in them, but I, I don't know that we have another, another path right now where we sit.
How much longer is the agreement?
The agreement ends in December of this year, so, I mean, my goal and I, the, well, my goal and my hope is that they come through and the units perform, and that we can at least extend this through the life of the carts that we have now, which would be for three years, and then we will have gotten six years out of the units, and then we can see where we're, where we're at. Other than that, and I'll go through, and then we can just go to questions. We have had good luck with our club sponsors that are tied to the GPS units. Allstate has indicated, Jessica Heartland has indicated that she'll renew for her $5,000 major sponsorship, which is great. Two years ago, she was a $1,250 sponsor last, and then we got her to go from $1,250 to $5,000 with, with a lot of work. You know, we involve her in the Sticks, the Chicks for Sticks, just a lot of promotion, and Jessica makes it easy. She does a lot of community service. So, you know, we advertise on the sports radio a couple of times a week. You know, we put out that she's involved in, you know, the children's museums, all of her charities, and so we, we work as partners. I met with Bargain Carts, which last year, they were a $2,500 sponsor. Becky has agreed to do $2,500, and she's considering $5,000. She was supposed to, you know, get back to me today. You know, our members do buy carts at Bargain. We did start doing a $100 certificate in the restaurant for anybody who buys a cart from Bargain, and she was interested. We've got 3,000 Facebook followers, so we're promoting her on Facebook. They've just did a huge investment in Lake Wales. They've always owned Brewers carts in Lake Wales, which is east on Highway 60, but they just built a whole new facility there, and it's about 20 minutes closer since I drove and met her at Brewers instead of the normal. So, you know, we're working hard to get that to $5,000. Ridge Realty dropped their sponsorship this year, and we're, Sun 'n' Lake Realty, Jim Service, who's a member, is picking up that $5,000 sponsorship. So from commitments, we're at $12,500. If Bargain Carts goes with $2,500, we'd be at $15,000 if Bargain goes with, with that. Heartland Bank has verbally committed to, it's a $2,500 sponsorship, but they Heartland Bank has verbally committed to, it's a $2,500 sponsorship, but they give $400 to the men, $400 to the ladies, and then $1,700 to us. And then also Roberts Tree Service, Tom, Tom Drake, we started his sponsorship in October, it was a $1,250 sponsorship. I expect him to renew this coming October, but that's, you know, too far ahead to predict. So right now, the sponsorship this year should be equal or grow from last year, and the monies we do bring in from the sponsorships does cover our service and maintenance agreement on, on the units. Rules and regulations, I need to get that tightened up, I've, I've gotten a number of suggestions from some of the supervisors in the last few days that I need to work into the document, and then get a consensus from everybody on the board, and also get a consensus on how we want to amend the document, so if we can just amend it by consensus, and I don't mean the important rules, amending it by consensus for rules like leave of absence, but, like, one of the things that's happening now is, we've just gone to not having a blue stake for the handicap flag, so, if, if that doesn't work, I want to make it to be as easy as just emailing the five board members and having three of the five say, "Yeah, it's fine if you reinstitute a blue stake." You know, I don't, don't want it to be too laborious to make changes, you know, some of the suggestions, we're adding the hours for the snack shack, you know, a lot of normal things that aren't in the rules right now that we could just add. Our stump project is, is going well, we're down to about four holes working backwards, which about, with about two or three other stumps that need to be done, we should be done with that by next week and have the contractor out of here. Earl's team is, is doing the best job at grading it right now, and then we'll be adding sod to finish off that, that whole process. Our stay-in-play is going really well, we're, we're booked out basically through the middle to the end of March, we've got one or two weeks left in March, so Kay and Cindy are doing a great, doing a great job, great job with that. Our membership is continuing to trend up, as of today, we're $42,441 to be exact, ahead of last year at the same time, so, that, that's obviously a great statistic for us. Earl has contacted three companies to come in to get bridges, to get bids on the bridges, sent them pictures, so that's in process. We had a familiarization trip last November with 12 golf riders, which is part of our involvement with the Citrus Golf Trail and the TDC. This weekend, Tim Baines, who's a sports writer for the Ottawa Sun in Canada, and Claudio DiMarci, I probably butchered his name, but he's out of Ontario, Canada, with the International Association of Golf Tours, and that's actually the largest golf tour in the world, so he's coming on Saturday and Sunday and playing with Tim and Ron Garrel, and I'll, I'm set up to meet them for lunch on Saturday afternoon. Wednesday, we host a Realtors Cocktail and Apps reception here on the, I believe that's the 31st, from 6:00 to 7:00. We've emailed out to all the Realtors that we're continuing our free membership with a purchase of a property and a trail fee, so all of them have gotten an email, they've all been invited to the cocktail and apps party, and then we're also going to be hosting the Realtors banquet, so when they come, I'll have a nice big sign at the door and a bunch of signage, so they can't miss the fact that we have that free membership available. Directory should be coming out in the next week. Ray Brooks's, I thought your priorities for the course care were very good, so I think we could adopt those as written, if we wanted to wordsmith it, we could make it a, a practice bunker instead of the practice sand trap, but other than that, I, I thought that was Earl's been here a little bit over a month, and I think we're already seeing a really positive impact from, from his abilities and, and guidance. Beyond that, he has, I mean, just as a general detail, he's going to be working on the range to sculpt the range and make the target greens more, more visible, so he's going to cut the range floor very short and the target greens longer, so that it's more of a, a better practice facility, and he's really trying to dive into the capital as time permits. We want to get our five-year capital together, but he really wants it to be tight, he doesn't want to have, you know, a project that's, he doesn't want to bring a project into the capital at 200,000 when it could turn out to be a $260,000, you know, capital item, so, he's working hard on that. That's all I have, are there any questions on the, any of the things I talked about? I know I covered a lot.
I got a few. I want this rules and regulation thing put to bed, it's ridiculous. We've only been talking about it for two, three months.
Are you referring to the policies?
Yes, policies, I'm sorry. I mean, we're just, I can't imagine why we can't get this thing out. So let's make that a priority if we could. The tree, the stumps that he's clearing on the course, does that include taking care of the trees on turtle number, oh, I'm sorry, deer number five? Right, deer number five? That's off to the side, off to the right side of the, just before the green?
It is being addressed, my...
That is being addressed as well? Okay. The bridges, I think I asked for that when I first got on the board, so that's four, five months ago, and we still can't get that. We can't even get an estimate of what the cost is going to be. Not good. And as far as the five-year capital plan, I brought that up in September to all of you guys, saying that we're going to do it in February, so I expect it to be done, period. Figure out a way to get it done. I don't care about Earl.
Do you want it to be done well, or just done?
I want it to be done well, but I told you in September, that's what I want.
Well, we've had a lot, we've had hurricanes and, I mean...
I don't care.
Well, that's great.
I know, I've got to have a five-year capital plan so that we can look at it and decide what's right for Sun and Lake.
We're going to bring that to the...
It's not just golf, there's other things.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're going to bring that to the board at, in the last meeting in February, which is the 24th or 25th?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure you understood, that's, it's got to be done.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I got.
Any further questions? No?
Jim, I, I just got one little one, you don't have to answer it now. I, two times this week, I was approached by group leaders that have tee times, and they got their two-month schedule, and in there the first month, and then the second month came and they changed the tee times down. I could, they, they, they asked me that, I, they can't make things three, only three weeks ahead of time, so what do we do when we move, say, a 12 o'clock, or a 10:30 tee time for a group, and then all of a sudden move them to 11? And you can get that and let me know, but I, I need to tell them, because if you can't make a, a tee time three weeks ahead of time, how do we know we're going to switch them, unless it's a tournament? How do we know a couple months ahead of time and just, because that aggravates some of the people, so I, just get that for me and I'll be able to tell them, okay?
I'll check into it, I, I suspect it's a large hotel group is what's, has, you know, has what's created the, the shift, so if, you know, if somebody has a 10:15 tee time and, you know, we have a block that's open from, you know, say, starting at 9:30, and they wanted to bring 40 people, that would push the 10:15 tee time, you know, to 10:40, or we would have to tell those 40 people not, not to come. You know, which is an option, but you're going to lose, you know, it's a whole group, so you, you would lose that, whatever, $1,600 if you did that, but I'll, I'll get back to you with the actual, but I'm kind of virtually certainly, you know, those are the people that we let book ahead.
Okay.
And just one last...
But if they're booking ahead, why are those tee times, why, why do they only start at nine? I guess I'm confused.
Well, in other words, so say we had, just to make it simple with the five of you, say, Dan had a group of Sun and Lake members that were playing from 8:45 to 9:30 on deer with the tee time course, and then you had a group that played from 10:30 to 11:30, so now there's 9:30 to 10:30 is open for the hotel group, but if they come in and need an hour and a half of tee times, then, then we're going to have to, if, and we want to get their business, we're going to have to move one of those, or both of those member groups to, to fit that in, or send them, you know, or send them to some other, you know, club that can fit them in.
That makes sense to me, and I, you know, I can't imagine why moving my particular tee time 15 or 20 minutes is going to make all that big a deal.
No, I mean, I, yeah, I understand.
Understand what you're saying, you got to do that.
Yeah, it's difficult, I mean, a member's being displaced by a non-member, and you just have to decide how the revenue balances against the revenue of the, of the membership.
I guess it depends on how much pain are we willing to take in terms of getting the exact tee time we want for a minimum, minimum payment as a due, of dues. You know, we're sitting here paying, I don't know what it is, $3,000 or $3,200 bucks, and we're acting like we're, we're, we're on a private golf course, and I'm guilty of that as everybody else, but, you know, we have to make some accommodations for outside play, particularly this time of year.
Yeah. Yes, well, and we all get used to what we get used to, and so, I mean, the one thing we do want to realize is that 36 holes with 300 members, we have better tee, tee time access than the most exclusive clubs in the country. 150 members per 18 is, is like the lowest number you can, you know, possibly get, so, that's something we really need to promote to people that come in for membership, because to, you know, to be able to get your time that you want, pretty often isn't something that's common, you know, in a private setting, because if, you got one golf course and one first tee, and you're on 18 holes with 300 members, you're, you're not going to hit the time you, you want, you know, you're going to do it within a couple hours, but you're not going to hit it within 30 minutes.
That's fine.
The only thing I do have, just that I, I did miss, was, just want to make sure everybody knows that Monday night's a member appreciation night, we've got entrees at 25% off, and we've also brought in a DJ, so I hope we can pack the place and have a lot of fun.
Thank you, Jim. General Counsel's report, David?
All right, as discussed at the last meeting, Ayala, it, there was movement, that, our attorney filed the motion for reconsideration regarding the Deceptive Unfair Trade Practices Act claims, which the Second DCA missed, you know, in their, in their prior briefs, so hopefully we'll have a response to that. That, basically what that'll do is, if we, if it goes favoritively for us, then those will be dismissed, and we'll just have the one negligent claim remaining, and that should hopefully expedite, with only one claim remaining, we can hopefully expedite the closure of that. A while back, we had a discussion with the county about the Unit 12 lots, there's, I think, there was at the time, there's over 1,600 now, I think with the estatement process, we're down to a little over 1,500 lots there, and we were talking about doing a group foreclosure in order to, basically, the, the county's prevented, the county can't, if the county wants to foreclose on their unpaid taxes, they have to do it individually, by individual lots, and with 1,500 lots, it's cost prohibitive to, to, to do that. The district, however, you know, we have, we've talked to, had a discussion with Bob Jermaine, and we can group those all, since they're all owned, the majority of them are owned by a single owner, we can group them all into one, into one big foreclosure. Based on the available information, it's currently estimated that such a uncontested group foreclosure is not likely to exceed $20,000 in costs. We have not moved forward on anything yet, because we wanted to bring that to the board and let you know that that's what we're currently potentially looking at if we want to take those steps to foreclose those lots. If we do foreclose them, once they're foreclosed, we can, you know, they'll, if, if we're the successful bidder, which, you know, if we're not, great, I mean, if someone decided to come and buy, and we're looking at $3.5 million worth of unpaid assessments that we'd be foreclosing. So, if we, either A, they would be, if you get bought at foreclosure sale, in which case we would recoup all those costs, or potentially, or they would belong to the district, then we could actively go out and look to find a, to sell them ourselves, or, like I say, our discussion with the county is, if, if we can't find a buyer as they're currently platted, which is they're small lots, they're like 50 by 100 or something like that, basically mobile home lots, if we can't find a buyer as platted, we could vacate the plat and turn it into one large parcel of land, which we could then, you know, either turn over to the county or allow the county to reclaim for taxes, and they, with it being a single parcel, they wouldn't have to go through the major expense of 1,500 lots, we'd have corrected that for them. And the talks that we've had with the county is that they may be, or, you know, for that to happen, they would have to be amenable to, if we turn it into that single parcel, and then they go and find a buyer, we would recoup our costs for, you know, providing that service to them. So, we, nothing is, other than the research and the meetings that we've had, we haven't spent any money now, but with that $20,000 number, that's what we're wanting to let you guys know, and we'll probably put it up on the next board meeting for a, you know, decision to be made if we want to start, if any, any further work is going to cost money, you know, to, to start, start that project, if that's something you're interested in us doing, or, you know, it can just, it can continue to sit.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying you would bring it up for discussion, not for...
We can, we can discuss it now, if you want, you know, or, or we can, or at, at the board discussion time, or if you, basically that's what we're trying to find out, is, is this something that board is interested in us pursuing, or, you know, should we, at this time, or do we want to set it for sometime down the road, or not at all?
The only reason I ask that is, I'm not sure, everybody on the board has the details of what we're referring to Unit 12.
Correct.
We've had some discussions, I've had discussions, I know Michael's had discussions about it, but I don't think collectively this board has the detail to do a formal discussion, maybe I'm wrong, you know?
Okay, well, we can...
I'm up to speed.
You're up to speed on that, huh? How about yourself?
No.
No? Up to speed on...
A little bit, not comfortable.
All right, well, then we, we, I'll put something together, I'll go with Tanya, we'll put something together for as a discussion item for the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Right before the meeting, I passed out, I gave you guys handouts for the Juan Labrador owner lot, this lot is at 4209 Ponce, it is currently under foreclosure, and I have received communication from the opposing council, who is basically seeking a reduction in the late fees in order to try and come to a settlement agreement and start making, you know, we talked about, generally, the, the district accepts payment plans that don't exceed 12 months. The opposing council has indicated that they're willing to enter into such a payment plan to bring this current, but you'll see that there, on top of assessments, there's also a significant amount of code enforcement liens. When we do our foreclosure, we don't generally foreclose, in fact, we almost never foreclose code enforcement liens, because, you know, they, if the, if it were to go to foreclosure sale, you know, the, mainly is the, number one is the, is a priority, our assessments have priority over everything except for county taxes. Our code enforcement liens do not have that same priority, and so if there's anything in between, you know, we can't, we can't do a foreclosure that way, plus, if it goes to foreclosure sale, you know, we generally want people, we want to recoup, we want to make sure we recoup our assessments, and then if anybody were to buy that, you know, they would be on the hook for those code enforcement liens, because those code enforcement liens are in fact, you know, recorded. If we do a settlement agreement, though, we want this property brought current, at least that would be my recommendation, and so right now, we're, and the attorney's fees, just to let you know, the attorney's fees are showing at $210, they're more like $1,800 with all the stuff that's gone back and forth over the past couple of weeks for this, with this lot. So, they're basically asking for a reduction of, the way I see it, the, the assessment late fees and the code enforcement late fees amount to $3,300. Attorney's fees have gone from, you know, $210, basically add, you know, added an additional $1,500, $1,600 of that, so the, the actual reduction would be... So the actual reduction would be, say, $1,800, $1,700 total if we were to enter into a payment plan. So if we proceed with the foreclosure and we take back the lot, our code enforcement liens disappear. Because you can't have a lien on property that you own. So if this went to a foreclosure sale and no one bid on it, then we lose out on that money. There's no way to recover it. So basically what it boils down to is, does the, is the board want to consider owning this lot and then potentially selling it? It is a corner lot on the corner of, what's that, what's that cross street? Ponson, but I don't know where that other crossroad is, but, and it's a rather large corner lot. But I don't know that we'd be guaranteed to recoup all this money if we were to be the owner and potentially sell it down the road. So basically what I'm looking for is some direction, is the board willing to entertain the request by the opposing council to grant a reduction in the late fees in order to enter into a settlement agreement and bring a property current.
So you're talking about a reduction of the assess, the late assessments and the late code enforcement?
Not the, not the assessments. Yeah, the actual, the late fees, yes. Whereas assessment late and code enforcement late, those, that totals $3,300.
Yeah, 8:48, 30, and the 24, 51?
Correct.
And they would give us everything else?
Correct.
Plus the additional attorney-
Plus the additional attorney's fees, exactly. And we'd space it out for a 12-month payment plan. Or we can proceed with foreclosure.
Is it, how much do we get upfront? I mean, is this an attempt just to buy us, back us off?
Oh, well, when we do payment plans, if we, there would be a consent judgment involved. So if they miss a payment, then we don't have to go back and re-foreclose. We would get a judgment entered that says the lot now belongs to us. So, or alternatively, I mean, I didn't, it didn't pop in my head until just now, if the district's interested in owning the lot, I can put forth a, you know, look, we'll, you know, sign the property over to the district and we can stop. Then we don't have to go through the expense of continuing the foreclosure. So basically that's what, the main question is, is, does the district want to own the lot and try to sell it? Or does the district want its money for the assessments over time?
It would seem to me that the best course for us to take is to get the consent judgment and give them a payment plan. That way we're done. Right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. In my opinion, yes. To give them a chance to get it brought current.
Okay, so would you need a motion to accept that?
No, I mean, I'm happy if, I'm happy with the consensus if everybody is on the same page to move forward with that proposal.
I agree with that. Totally agree with that.
Okay.
I don't want the law back.
I think it's important you, I was glad to see you give us your opinion, Dave, because that's what I was waiting for.
You're done, David? Okay. General Manager's report, Tanya?
Yes, to continue what David was mentioning about our meeting with Hollins County. David did not participate in this meeting. It was myself and Mr. Gilpin and Ron Hanley and then some other county staff. But basically, the Unit 12 discussion was part two of that meeting. Part one of that meeting was to find out the county's plans on selling the vacant lots that they currently own in Sun and Lake. And so a decision was made that the county would proceed in taking lots to surplus to the Board of County Commissioners on an agenda they think at the end of February. And then they are gonna list these properties for sale. But they're only gonna start with the properties that are in the Unit 16 area Deer Run that they own. And they only have enough staff or staff, the staffing situation there to list maybe 25 properties at a time to their website. Currently, the county owns about 50 lots in the Deer Run area currently. Within the next year or two, they will own about 450. So right now, the focus is on the marketable properties. And the county feels that those are the properties that they should focus on. Anything west of Cortez, they're not gonna focus on right now because it does take substantial staff time to put together this information for the Board of County Commissioners and then advertise this for bids, is what they're gonna do. So persons interested in any of these lots they have advertised on their website can submit a bid on one single lot or multiple lots that they have listed. So they might only have listed 25 at first, the next month might be 50. So they'll just continue in this process until they get through a majority of the lots they own. So this will take some time.
The interior lots on Deer Run?
These are, yes, they are some interior, interior lots. Some of them are-
Some of them are golf course lots.
There's no golf course lots right now. There's only 50 or so that the board owns. But a majority of the lots that the Board of County Commissioners currently own is to the west side of Deer Run, which is, remember the zoning R3 that we've talked about? Those are where the majority is.
Yeah, it's backside of Pebble Beach.
Yes, that's correct.
This is Unit 16, right?
Unit 16, yes.
The units that they put on the website, how are they zoned? I mean, what kind of house can people build on them if they buy it?
In Unit 16, we have two scenarios. We have an R1 zoning and an R3, or it's an R1A, I'm not sure.
There's a big difference in the two, right?
There's, there's a big difference.
So you're gonna sell, and again, I'm not, just want to understand, they could sell lots to people who can build small houses?
Well, in, there's a thousand square foot minimum in Deer Run for lots that don't have the deed restricting, restriction on them.
Are we happy with that? I mean, are we happy that they're selling lots that potentially could have?
I believe that a majority of the lots the county currently has or will have is gonna have the deed restriction on it. But I don't know until we get a map laid out and kind of see where that happens. But there's a, there's a thousand square foot minimum now. An R3, which is a multifamily, you could build a duplex on those. So it just depends on where the lots are located that they're gonna sell.
And these lots are already on, they're available on the website or they're going to be?
Not yet. Not yet. I think it'll be up to-
I think before they do that, we should find out what their, what the specifics are on the lots. Because we don't want thousand square foot homes, I believe.
But we don't own the lots.
Yeah, we don't own the lots.
Well, but that was the conversation that we had last meeting about talking to them on the rezoning, correct?
Correct. Yes. I mean, that is correct. But Unit 16 is very complicated. We cannot change an R3 zoning to an R1 zoning. What that means is that if you own it, you can agree to change it. But we don't, we don't own those lots.
We're gonna have a whole bunch of problems if they sell a lot and people start building thousand square foot homes on it. We gotta figure out a way, David, somebody's gotta figure out a way that that doesn't happen. Otherwise, we're gonna be eventually down the road having some seriously upset people.
You can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, this was the discussion that I had at the last meeting specifically, when they were, we were talking about thousand square foot homes, as well as even 750 square foot homes. And I, I was very concerned, I expressed my concern at that time about, let's say, smaller homes being built there. And, you know, it's nice to get them on the, on the revenue stream for assessments and whatnot. But I'm not sure with all of the other things that might come along with it, it's good for our community. But we're, our hands are tied. The county owns it. If they don't want to rezone it, we're stuck. Am I correct, David?
Aside from, aside from what we talked about, which is potentially where we change the designation of every R1, every R1A, every R, you know, two lot.
I thought there was a, excuse me, I thought there was a discussion though, when we went initially, started this last, this past summer, I thought there was a discussion of 1,600 to 2,200 square foot, that discussion. And that kind of, that didn't end up well. But I also thought that the county was willing to look at like a 1,200 square foot.
That's correct.
But we don't see that yet. Right now, they're still at 1,000 or 750 square feet. So do we, do we have any feeling for whether they will rezone it to at least 1,200 square feet? I mean-
Well, I'd say as far as them rezoning it, no, I don't think they're voluntarily going to rezone it. Though the discussions we had was creating new zoning definitions, like we're going from an R1 and then we're gonna create an R1 SNL designation. And that R1 SNL designation would have a different minimum square footage. And then that would be, the county would have the ability to apply that to every R1 lot in the district or every R1A lot in the district. But they cannot, you know, if these are coming in and start selectively, they can't selectively do it.
Okay, I thought that you could do it on like Unit 16 as a whole. Did we not, I missed that, I was wrong?
We don't have, let's say, if we don't own the lots, we don't have the ability to do anything to them, correct?
Yeah, we can request.
We, all we can do is request the county, take some action.
It's, and I understand, it's totally up to them as to what they want to do. All we can do is put a request into them and hope that they see what our thought process is here for the community.
Correct, correct.
And so I guess we maybe should look to a plan of maybe rezoning at least 1,000 square foot minimum, something upward. I mean, I'm not looking to have containers converted to homes out there. I'm not, that's not gonna make me real happy, nor will it make the community, the people in this community happy. I just don't, I know our hands are tied, but at the same token, we need to put our heads together to see how we can work with Ron and the county to do something. We can't just let it sit.
And that's an actual, that's a good idea. We did not request of the county to consider zoning change, but that is certainly something I can do. Because we talked about it as a board, you know, creating a new SNL, R1, R1A. And that is an option, but we would have to take that to the Board of County Commissioners. But what I could do is request of the county, but they can only do that for the lots that they currently own. And where the zone, they only own 50 or so right now, but they're gonna own 450. So I can certainly request that, but it doesn't encompass the entire Unit 16.
Well, they only own roughly 50 units in 16, but not in Sun and Lake. They own a lot of lots in Sun and Lakes.
They currently own over 1,200 in Sun and Lake. That will be over 1,600 within the next few years, yes.
I thought when we were here last, last meeting that Ron got up and said he would be open to having that conversation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and he is.
That was for the consideration of creating SNL, creating its own SNL R1 and R1A to increase that square footage minimum. So if that is what the board still wants to consider, I'm happy to do so. We can start going through that process.
And this, just to let you guys know, this process is gonna take, what, eight or nine months, that they said, to get these? And I know Ron told me they're very willing to work, especially in that area that we're talking about right now, to bring them up because they want to get them sold, they want to keep the people happy around them. But I think where we're have major discussions and problems is on the other side of Cortez. And they're not at all interested in-
No, they're not.
I mean, that's, but from what I gathered at the meeting, but they totally control it. But I think they're gonna work with us. I was very encouraged.
Yes.
And I think Tanya was too at our meeting there. First thing when they start squabbling a little and we have to get back to the idea that we, we gotta get these lots available. And I think they're willing because they're gonna, they're gonna own them, they're gonna probably sell them. We won't be able to get too involved with it, but we're hoping to.
The sooner we get started, the sooner we get finished. So I think that's appropriate to go right now.
That's what I told him. I said, we need to, we need to get these lots. If we stand there and just look at them, it's gonna be another two years.
And to President Camp's point, you know, if they, let's say they sell 20 of those lots. Some of them are zoned R3, some of them are R1, and their square foot minimums would apply in that sale.
Yeah, we need to, we need to change it.
We need to protect this community.
Yeah. I think the only way to do that is to recommend what David has proposed as an SNL change for the entire unit. So we can cover, cover our bases throughout the entire section of the community.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. Let's get it done.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple of the things. We mentioned bid number 17-13 on the drain entry mediation. We received five bidders yesterday. And bid number 17-12 for the assessment study, we received two proposals on Wednesday. So we haven't, staff has not had time to review that, but we'll be bringing that information to the board very soon.
It's encouraging to see that many bids coming in, responses based on what we've seen in the past. That's very encouraging.
And I do have the sample letter for the front entrance sign, so if you'd like to take a look at this. And we will discuss this during the budget process for this upcoming summer about the possibility of putting some new lettering. This was Mr. Brooks, so I'll, I'll put this up here.
We don't have the money now. We'll talk about it for the budget.
During the budget process, yes.
I'm good. I love it.
Only two signs a year.
By the way, what's, oh, I can't say yet. Go ahead.
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Wow, this is good. Committee reports?
No committee reports.
Well done. Public comment. This is the fun time.
What is this?
This is the first time I heard of this SNL, David?
I'm just kidding.
You're supposed to have your phone off. Anyway, this SNL designation for zoning, that's the first time I'd heard of that. I mean, why don't, and I agree, we need to force feed that, but wouldn't that still apply to anything that's sold after we apply that?
Yes, it would be, it would be a complete-
Well, then why don't we do that and get that done? Because even the property that they currently have now, once it's sold, then that would still, I mean, it would be like-
It'll apply to everything. It'll be, it'll be, the problem is, like I say, it's a, it's a great idea in theory, but we haven't, all we can do is propose it. The county is completely-
We can do that ourselves without the county, without the county, can't we?
No, no.
We can't, we can't do that? But can we do that separately ahead of all this property movement?
Nope. It's a, it's a, it's a, it would be a new zoning classification that the county would impose on all the properties.
Okay. Okay, now, one other thing here for David. Re-educate me now on foreclosures. You were talking about the Unit 12 foreclosure that you and the county would foreclose together?
No, no, no. We would foreclose it. We would foreclose the district assessments. Would the district has the ability to foreclose its assessments? And it takes, our assessments take priority over everything except for county taxes.
Okay, I didn't think we were foreclosing on lots anymore. I thought we were foreclosing selectively on, on properties that had homes on it. But I noticed in the last check, the last report, that there was like $12,000 in foreclosure for you guys. And I just wondered, it sounded like, it looked like a big number. Are we, did we change our, changed our attitude and we're now foreclosing on lots? Didn't we, didn't we, wasn't that just gonna go to the county and we weren't gonna foreclose on any of those?
We've been foreclosing on lots that we think are either have a beneficial interest to the district or some part of a long-term plan.
We're not gonna get back with, we're just at foreclosing unilaterally on everything that was in the rear.
Everything we foreclosed.
Because, you know, that number got so dag on high, you know, it was like, what, $750,000 one year or close to it for foreclosures. But I just wondered, this Unit 12, is it legal? I mean, is Hometown America interested in that at all? Would it be legal for the county and Sun and Lake and Hometown America to discuss about, hey, look, this is all gonna come, it's right adjacent to you, it's, it's, it's platted for the type of structures that you're gonna put in there. I know one time when John Grechek was still there, he was interested in it, but the board wasn't. They had a problem with John Grechek and they didn't want to talk to John about anything. But could we, could we enter into some kind of discussion or at least call them and say, hey, you guys are gonna be other, ever gonna be interested in that? Look at this. Look what you could do. You could expand-
I mean, conceiv-, yeah, conceivably, but like I say, it's not our property right now. You know, we don't, we don't own it, so.
Well, the county owns a bunch of it, don't they? I mean, we're, we can-
Unit 12 is owned almost exclusively by a single LLC, I believe.
Yeah, DF, yeah, whatever it is.
As we would be foreclosing on.
Right. But since it's gonna happen, I mean, even ahead of time, getting ahead of the game, wouldn't it be maybe prudent or smart to even approach those people and talk to them about it?
I guess, yeah, potentially, but yeah.
I don't think it'd be a bad thing to do. One other thing, in a recent meeting, I noticed that we're not printing out the check register that comes with the financial report. But that's, and I guess it's the fact that we just didn't want to print all that paper. But hopefully you guys are still going, and it's still available on the district website. And hopefully you guys are going in there every month and looking, looking at that check register, because, you know, the main responsibility of the board is to control the funds generated by the district. And if you don't look at that check register every month, because it's one of the best tools you have, and without seeing the expenditures in the micro, you can't, it gets lost in the macro or the financials, because it identifies unusual activity, it passed ID subdividing projects to avoid bidding, and expenditures beyond limits of authority, and all kinds of stuff. And that's why I picked up that $12,000 bill. When I looked at it this week, there's a, matter of fact, there's a $17 check written to a guy that's been dead for five years. And I don't know how that, that happens, but, but, and engineering fees are $13,341, but the summary shows $4,200. And it's probably, there's this entry there for $4,200. But it's a great tool for you guys, because if you see a big number, I mean, there's not a month that went by, and Tanya can probably vouch for that, that I didn't have a question on something that showed up in that check register. It's the best tool you got, really. It identifies unusual activities and things that say, whoa, wait a minute, we got a $20,000 limit of authority, and here's a check written for $19,995, and the next day, there's another check written for $200 for the same, to the same vendor. So, it's a good thing to look at. I hope you don't not look at it, because we're not printing it every month, so just consider that.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Discussion to and from the board?
I do have a question. I haven't, I guess I'm the newest guy on here, me and Ray. I'm not sure why we're having these meetings here as opposed to the community center. I hear lots of kitchen noise and stuff going on, not necessarily so much today, but is there a reason beyond?
I think, I think-
Yeah, I moved it here, Dan, because it was, it's better. And now, it probably can't be changed if, but I think that's up to the board if you want to change it, but it was moved here. I know it, I know it clears up stuff that's going on there.
In the summer, in the summertime with the summer camps, we moved it here, correct? Probably May, June, starting in June.
Yeah.
And then we, and then it was continued from there, but we certainly don't have to have meetings here year-round. You know, summertime, I would highly recommend it, just because of conflicts with the programs over there in the summer, but it's up to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's a distraction to hear the noises. There wasn't much today, but the last meeting, I think two of the waitresses were having an argument about something. And while that might be fun to listen to, it's kinda distracting for me.
See, I guess we're all different. I didn't realize that, that there was, of course, I'm not, you know.
Just curious.
I mean, I don't want to make a unilateral decision as to whether it'll be here or not. I think that should be, you know, what everybody feels comfortable with. I have to believe that it takes a little more time to set up the AV or the audio here than it does at the community center, because everything is pretty much piped in there, correct?
Well, we would be using assistance.
With the, with the external portable speakers? You're not gonna use the-
The acoustics in that building, which is why we bought the portable system. It doesn't, something's off about it, and we have tried to fix it, and this system works. We decided, you know, this portable system works the best.
So, so we have a system over there that doesn't work properly?
No, it works, it just doesn't work for, for speaking, it works more for music and audio.
Okay, because I remember way back when, when I was commuting back and forth, they thought they put a pretty expensive audio system in there for that purpose. Okay, just out of curiosity. I mean, I would, I would move to say, if the board wants to, go back to the community center, with the exception of in the summer, because I know they have the summer camps there. But that's, like I said, that's, I, either way, for me, it doesn't really matter.
I don't really care, I was just curious, and it can be distracting, and you know, people have to be working in the kitchen if you're gonna serve lunch. And if our meetings go long, then we have had the situation where we had a banquet going on across the deal.
I don't, I don't care either way, but I do know that they've been using it on Friday mornings now for something, something else, but it really doesn't. I know Jim, the only person I heard that had a concern was Mr. Kretzborn, but that's the only person, and so I don't care. It's not a, not a big deal.
I've had three or four people ask me why.
Did they ask you why, because they didn't like it, or they just asked you why?
Yeah, they asked me why, because they didn't like it.
Okay.
I don't care.
What, just a recommendation, what we could do is, go ahead, and we're gonna have a special meeting here on Tuesday for the kitchen renovations. Have the February 9th meeting here, and if there's consideration from the board, we can re-advertise a location for the February 24th meeting to be at the community center, and continue that until the first summer program is in place.
Yeah, why don't we just look at the calendar over there?
Just look at the calendar.
And see what's available, before we even advertise.
Our names are always available. It's for during summer.
And I can say that there is already a conflict in this room for March 8th. Jim?
Yeah.
Is that the right date, March 8th?
That's the conflict with St. Patty's Day.
Okay, we would have to move, finding out, recently, I was gonna talk with Mark on this, finding this out, we would have to move the meeting anyway-
Okay.
-to the community center, so.
Why don't we get together and see what we have for a schedule, and then just make the decision?
Oh, wow.
Any further discussion between the board?
Yeah, I got some. I got another handout. I'm good with handouts.
I do, can I jump in and ask a question here? I know it's, I'm out of water, but.
You should know, I always come with-
It's a single question. The billboard. Are we doing anything with that money that we got, the $10,000?
Yes, we are. We are hoping very soon to have three quotes from local builders, and after Hurricane Irma, we couldn't find anybody. And now, we finally have some interest from a couple of local contractors, so because the price is less than $25,000, we need three quotes, and that was, that's been the most difficult process throughout this last four or five months, is to find three quotes. So, we're very close, we believe. We've had a couple of interests even this week.
Okay, great.
So, we have one right now, formally, or two?
I have one.
You have one, okay. So, we're very close.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
I have a few things. Somebody asked me why the color of the sign is something else. The color of the sign going into the maintenance facility was a different background than all the other signs that we have. Just thought I'd throw that out. I believe it's white as opposed to everything else is yellow. I couldn't answer that question.
Mike Hurley.
I'm just, somebody said something to me. You didn't get, did you hear it?
Yeah, I heard it.
Okay.
As a temporary sign, we put it up because-
Oh, that's a temporary one?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, that answers it. So, I assume that-
I think I told you that, no, that you didn't ask that question, right?
No, you just got it. The permanent sign's gonna be yellow.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
It looks just like the others. We put that up because, because all the deliveries and stuff-
Yeah.
-were going down to whoever.
Do we have a permanent sign planned for that building? I thought that was the permanent sign. No?
We don't have a permanent sign planned. That's fine.
Okay.
No, we don't have a plan, but that's a just temporary, that was a temporary sign, so, so we had an address, so people knew where to go. I mean, it was like a coupon.
So, is it gonna stay there, or is it, it's temporary? Okay. Let's go to the next thing. You know, I know that the Bachi Court and the Shuffleboard Court was approved by the board sometime last year. So, I asked for a little bit of information on it, because I was just curious, more so than anything else. And the budget that was allocated for the Bachi Courts and the Shuffleboard will get us this picture, which is, that is the Bachi Court, correct? And this is how it's gonna look on our facility. And I took a ride yesterday with Mike and with Tenille, and we went over to Tanglewood, and we looked at their facilities. And I'm not advocating that we have to have the same type of look or anything like that, but what I saw over at Tanglewood compared to what I see on this picture, I have to tell you, I think we're making a serious mistake. If we can't do it right, then I would say we shouldn't do it at all, because we're wasting money by doing this. It will accomplish very little. And my thought process would be to properly price out either Shuffleboard or Bachi, just do one maybe of the two, and do it correctly. And if we have to wait and take this money and save it for a little bit of time till next year, no, that's what we have to do. But I think if we do it, we should do it correct. And I don't believe, looking at this picture, that that's correct in my mind. And no fault of anybody, this is what, you know, they had to work with financially, there's just not enough money. So, we're gonna put something in, and then if it works, what are we gonna do then? So, I thought I'd bring it up to you guys, because I think if we put this, it's gonna go right by the tennis courts and the pickleball courts. And it's, I believe it's already staked out.
It's staked out, yeah.
And it's just, first of all, if you put them both in that area, you can't expand any of them, because I don't know how you would have to do it. So, that would be a waste of money right there. And they pointed out to me, as Tanya mentioned earlier, the pickleball, we put in eight courts initially, I don't know how that came about, but we put in eight courts initially, and we've got 500 and some odd members. So, that was a rip-roaring success, but we did it right. And if we're gonna do Shuffleboard and Bachi, what, there's another name for Bachi, what is it?
Well, there's another game called the Tom.
There you go.
That's what the community, they're doing.
Yeah, these actually on the picture are the other game, balls. But we went over, when we were over at Tanglewood yesterday, there was nobody on the courts. Now, and then about 5:00 to 10:00, or 10:00 to 10:00, they all started coming out of the woodwork, guys with their shuffleboard, I don't even know what they're called, things to do shuffleboard, all the people are coming with their little balls to play Bachi. So, they have, obviously, we figured out they had leagues at 10 o'clock. So, it was very popular over there, and the courts were being used. So, I just think we ought to, I mean, we're trying to sell Sun and Lake. I look at this, and I'm not very proud of it. So, I think we ought to do it right. So, I don't know how you guys feel.
I would like you to continue working on it, Mr. Brooks, and I would do what you recommend.
I think you should take that committee, you should form your own committee, do some research, and get together with Michael, and come up with a plan.
I just don't want to spend, how much money is it right now? 30?
We have 15 that was, that was allocated for me to do whatever I thought.
Yeah, I just don't want to spend the money now.
And I have three to do Bachi.
Or do it. I mean, you guys agree that this is not something that we want?
I don't know, I want you happy, and I think you know more about, more about not doing this.
You gotta go over to Tanglewood and see what they got. It's very impressive.
It's very impressive.
I'd like to see something, right? I'd like to see done.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I didn't realize until yesterday, the numbers that we have for the pickleball and stuff, I mean, what Tenille was telling me, wow, I mean, you know. The way I like to do it is take the 15,000 that we have, okay? Move the fence out, take down those trees, and make the area wider. Why invest money when we're gonna do, you know, basically do the same thing? I mean, when we went over there yesterday, I think there were eight courts, so we need a lot more room. So, if we have the 15, why not open it up now, then next year, put the courts, you know, in that area, but prepare it now, and we don't have to spend the money next year for preparing it, so I'll prepare.
Here's what I would say to that, as a committee of one, soon to be at least two, as I'm gonna volunteer you, I think we ought to get somebody who knows, I mean, an engineer, no offense, somebody who knows what they're doing, and show them the area that we want them to come up with and draw a plan. And it could be a long-range plan, it could be, we're gonna do phase one, phase two, phase three, whatever it is, but let somebody tell us how much land we need to do, what we think we need to do.
That's exactly what I-
And if that means taking down the trees and expanding the fence, fine, but I think we need a little bit of professional help.
Good with that?
I can't draw-
I'm very on board with that.
Are you comfortable with that, Michael?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it.
Go for it.
Is that okay? Oh, do we want to, can we finalize this thing, so we can get it out of here?
I don't know what it is.
This is the, are we good?
Yeah. Other than, Jim recommended changing maybe, but I don't know if it makes any difference.
And who's gonna communicate this to Casper?
I can send it to Casper. Do you, do you want to change it to bunker on the bottom, or does it matter?
I have sand trap, you want bunker, that's fine. But when you communicate it to Casper, if you would send us a copy, CC us.
I'll copy you, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Michael, I actually, Tanya's gone. I asked Tanya yesterday, but maybe you can enlighten me a little bit. Where the maintenance facility is, the new maintenance facility, oh, Andrew's here, so maybe he can even answer. Where the new maintenance facility is, you have Columbus, have, you had where the old driveway went in, and where the-
Telephone building?
Yeah, well, it's telephone, it's the, yeah, connect or whatever, it's not Comcast, it's the other one, CenturyLink. So, it was all torn up, the road there, then the drive going in had, and I don't know what you call that, but it's the clay base that they use for, for when you're putting a foundation, and that orangey colored stuff.
That they run it.
Yeah, and it really looks nice, because after it rains, it has like ruts like this, and, you know. We just had some paving done at the entrance at the other end. Why did we not at least pave where they tore out the gutter and everything, or the curbing that leads in there? And what is our plan? Because I was told we don't have money to do this.
Well, our plan is to move the humps further towards the-
The mounds.
The mounds towards the telephone building. So, what they tore off is our plan is to do it in-house, or whatever we can afford it, is to move those mounds further up and clean all that area up.
Okay, so you're going to expand-
Yes.
-the driving range?
Exactly.
Okay, and that precludes you from doing, obviously, the work to the road?
Right, for now.
Yeah, there were-
I mean, you can explain that, that was a missed one.
Now, is that budgeted? Or are we gonna wait until next year for this?
You're talking about the expansion of the driving range, or the alterations?
Both.
The driving range was not part of the, any changes to the driving range, other than the shifting the mounds for the new bulk bins, the rest of that was not included in this budget for the maintenance facility. But we were, we were planning on doing it in-house-
Right.
-as much as we can. It was part of the project to remove the drive, the old drive going in. The dirt they brought in was just basic field dirt that they had.
Fill that area up.
We didn't, I don't think we wanted them doing any finish work to it, because we were planning on doing it, hopefully, this year, if we have, if we have time or funds, if we need to hire someone to help. But the road, the roadside's just gonna be restored, it should be sodded. It should be sodded.
Yeah, by siding.
We're not going to, yeah, we shouldn't be doing any.
So so I'm not confused here because it easily happens. You said this, maybe this year? Are we going to be looking at this? What's the timeline on it?
Well, we're going to do moving the mounds in-house.
Correct.
As soon as we can get to that. Then we'll have to come back and fix everything else when we finish. So I mean, hopefully we'll get to it. We're going to try to do a lot in-house. And what we couldn't, if we didn't have the equipment, you know, we'd have to, you know, equipment by the hour, you know, just to clean up a little. But I plan on doing it this year, yes.
In-house, you keep referring, you keep referring to in-house work. And all I'm trying to understand is, are we talking two months, three months, five months, six months? When do you, when do you feel your crew could do, at least move those mounds? I mean, are we waiting until the summer to do this? I'm just trying to get a feel for it.
Well.
You're doing it in-house. So that's why I'm trying to understand why we can't schedule it.
Well, we've had some which to do. We have so much, you might not have any thought of, you know, going to that, you know. We're still trying to finish up all the outside of buildings. We have a lot of work in other places. Yes, I plan to do it within the next few months. Now, if you want a timeline like Ray will say when, I can't give you one, okay? But yes, I do plan on getting it, you know, to that as soon as possible.
Okay. And that's all I ask, right? And I know you're extremely busy. Don't get me wrong. I just need to kind of get a feel for it so that six months down the road, if I say we asked for it in January and we still don't have it done, I mean, you have to kind of put a stake in the ground to say when you think it will be done because it'll be a moving target forever. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. I mean, Michael and I have talked about, you know, moving the mounds in the past, just that we never set a date to start. I mean, you know, you know, with all the moving and everything else we've been doing, you know, we just had to get to that.
We put them, we built that mound, right?
Yeah.
I guess. We built that mound and now we're going to move it.
Yeah, but it's.
No, you're on the wrong mound.
You're on the wrong mound.
You're on the wrong mound.
What about the telephone pole? The telephone pole is in the middle.
Coming down Columbus.
The mound that's facing the the driving range? Not that one?
It's on the side.
The one on the side?
Yeah.
Where the road, where that fake road is?
Yes, exactly. Yes.
See, that's.
So we built that mound and now we're going to move that one?
Well, we've got it. It's been there since that was.
Well, you refined it. It looks very nice now.
Twenty years, thirty years old.
Yeah.
Not doing my work.
No.
I am.
No.
That's all right. I guess my only other comment would be, why do we have, why do I have to find out about it because Mark asks the question?
What are you talking about?
Mark asked a question.
Well, what, I mean, aren't we supposed to know about these things?
Okay, I think he understands where we have to go with this. That's just.
Just just so you might know, and that's why we all get questions, because that doesn't look very nice. And we all get flustered because, you know, if Mark doesn't ask this question, it's like me. I mean, how many times have I asked you and you're going to?
The comment that was.
You know, it looks terrible. All these, I know.
But the comment that keeps coming back, the recurring comment is, why did we not finish the job?
Yeah.
That was not in the contract to build the building. That's why, that's why it wasn't finished by the contract. That's why it's not done.
When I, when I say that, you're taking it literally. What I'm saying is, it was torn up. It was left rough. That's all I'm saying. And we should have had some kind of plan, whether it was part of the contract or not, we should have had some kind of plan to clean it up.
Well, you would just have a.
Okay. Thank you.
I think he's got, he's got a good question because I just, I'm like Mark, I don't want it there in May, in June. I mean, it, it's frustrating. It's it's just like the over there and I I talked to Jim about behind number eleven team. That hasn't been cleaned up yet. Howard's, right by Howard's house, that, that looks terrible still. I mean, and it's not, I don't think we're being critical of you. It's just, we want to know when, we don't see, we don't see changes.
You can't put everybody everywhere, but we have other work, you know. I mean, these were things that came up after the construction. And you got to understand that.
We do. Trust me.
Okay, I see we have, I guess the public can stay here for this too, right? Sunshine Law Training Workshop. So I guess, David.
Tanya's passing out the the handout, but it's, all of you should have received a copy of this when you got your initial board, when you initially became supervisors.
Yeah.
Do you want to take a five minute? Do we want to take a five minute? Two minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can take a two minute.
Let's take a quick recess. Everybody can use the restroom. Come on, guys. We got it. Okay, the beginning of it talks a little bit about the the role of the board of supervisors. Just a reminder, you're supposed to understand and comply with the sunshine law and the code of ethics for public officers. You're charged with governing the district by setting policies and procedures. That's under policy A one one oh seven. You do delegate some of your executive authority to the general manager. I want you guys to be thinking out, you are macro managers. You are large picture managers. You know, the goal is to avoid, you know, having to to micromanage. It's, you're always going to get requests. People are always going to come here asking you guys to do stuff. But, you know, the the main thing you need to focus on is macro management. Holding attend regular public board meetings, plan for the future growth and maintenance of the district. Like to remind that only the board can take action or make directions as a as a group. Individual supervisors can request information or advice from district staff, but they should avoid giving directions to district employees unless specifically authorized. And that's under B eleven oh eight. So just want to remind you guys of that. The sunshine law is still two eighty-six point oh one one. There are three basic requirements. There, if there's meetings or public boards, commissions must be open to the public. Reasonable notice must be given and minutes must be taken. The big question is always what constitutes a minute or what constitutes a meeting. As it stands right now, if it's two or more members are together discussing discussing some matter which foreseeably will come for the board or commission for action. Doesn't have to, it's face to face, telephonic, email, any sort of communication can constitute a meeting. And foreseeable has to be reasonably anticipated. If you're talking about something that may happen ten or fifteen years down the line, arguably, that's not, you know, necessarily foreseeable. You know, you may not be supervisors then, it may never actually come to fruition. So so those sort of discussions would be okay. But if it's, if you, basically what you need to do is think to yourself, you know, if you're talking about something with another supervisor, is it ever, is it possible that we're ever going to have to vote on this? If the answer is yes, you should not be discussing it. As of the current rules, there are, there is some pending legislation that hopefully we'll have some answers. I think it's later this month about that may change as about what constitutes a meeting. And I will let you guys know as soon as that is official. I checked on it yesterday. Nothing has been finalized, but it is, it's also not dead. It hasn't died in committee or anything like that. It's still just pending. But I think it's up for action, you know, very soon. Actually, it may even be today. So I will let you know once that, if that, if that change occurs. Also, you can't act through intermediaries. You can always get information from other people, but you can't, you know, direct or talk to Tanya. Like I say, until you talk to Tanya about, she's supposed to keep confidential. She's not supposed to divulge that. That would make her acting as an intermediary. And as also, you're not supposed to ask her, hey, go find out what so and so thinks about this or that type, that type of stuff. You are allowed to send information between yourselves. But the main thing is that it's just only information. You can send someone, here's some information I gathered. You can send it to the board, you know, to other board members. Here's some information I have gathered, which I want to discuss at the next board meeting, period. Nothing, nothing else. Generally, the best thing to do is to give it to Tanya and she can disperse it. But it is not technically incorrect if you were to send it, you know, directly amongst yourselves. But generally, what we suggest is, if you want information spread, have Tanya do it. Reasonable notice is pretty, as self explanatory as it sounds, there's no specific definition. You know, reasonable can be considered reasonable notice kind of depending on the situation. That's generally stuff that we have to worry about as far as getting, you know, the information out to the public and open to the public. Anybody that wants to can attend. They don't have to be a resident of Sunnolake. They don't have to be a property owner. Anybody that wants to can can sit in on these meetings and we can't stop them. Public participation, however, is a little bit different. You are, as the, as the president and the board, you're allowed to set rules as to how you're going to allow people to speak. We generally keep a kind of informal process here. You know, it's three minutes for public comment, five minutes if, you know, they ask for additional time. We're always pretty lax on that. I'm the official timekeeper. That was delegated to me a while back. If you want to change that, you can. I generally try and get a feel for what the board's allowing. And if someone seems to be rambling, I'll, you know, tell them your time's expired. But like I said, we can't, we can't, we, all we can do is say that here's the rules that are set out. Here's going to how we're going to allow people to communicate. We can't prevent people from communicating as long as they're within the rules. I think that even includes, you know, if someone wants to stand in the corner with a video camera and record the whole thing, they're allowed to do that as long as they're not interfering with the meeting. So if there's any questions?
I just have one question since, I'm not sure if this does overstep. If I wanted to send to each supervisor and say to them, is there anything particularly you'd like to discuss at an upcoming meeting?
No.
You can't.
Anything you send should not expect a response.
Okay, so if somebody wants to discuss Bachi, for an example, because that was an example today, when the agenda is being put together, how would I know that that person wants to discuss Bachi?
If a supervisor wants something on the agenda, then they go to the general manager. The general manager brings that to the president when they're setting the agenda.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure. New guy on the block here.
And just like, like the handout that Supervisor Brooks gave out today, he could have emailed that to all of you. That wouldn't have been improper. My recommendation is to send it to Tanya, have Tanya to send it out to everybody. But he could say, no, it could have been a very simple email. I've gathered this information. Be prepared to, you know, please review it so we can discuss at the, at the board meeting, period. No response. Do not respond.
I know. I know that.
But yeah, that that sort of communication is okay. But generally, we wanted to go through Tanya. That way, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about how it got disseminated.
So it's traditional the way I think we've done it, but I just wanted to make sure. That's the only question I had.
Any questions?
I'm good.
Ready? Tanya's adjourned.